...with our laws and municipal code. If you intend to speak on anything other than that item, please make a comment card and speak during oral communications, which is next. So hopefully, that is clear. If you'd like to speak on something broader than just that very narrow topic, please speak during the oral communications portion. With that, any other?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I have a point. There's some technical difficulties to with the broadcast today.
Oh, that's right. That's right. I was going to note that. Thank you. This doesn't pertain to anyone here, but for those that might be watching remotely, usually, we broadcast both on Cox Communications Cable and our YouTube channel. We understand that the Cox feed is not live tonight, so maybe you can text people who may not be able to see the council meeting and want to see it. It is available on YouTube. If they Google YouTube and San Clemente City Council, they'll be able to find that link and watch us live as we proceed. Thank you, Councilmember Cabral.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just say there was no reportable action coming out of closed session?
All right. No reportable action out of closed session. Thank you. And anything else?
Do you want me to take the public comments, oral communications after the item?
No, I think we'll proceed in the order of the agenda, just so that people have that expectation. Do we have any comments cards for oral communications?
We do.
Okay. How many cards?
Let's see here. Seven.
Okay. Seven cards for oral communications. Remember, you have three minutes. The green light will turn on once you start. And please, as the comments are being made, we're going to be listening to the comments. We're going to be not interacting with folks who are making those comments during oral communications. In fact, we're not allowed to because it's not on a specific agendized item. Please, so that everyone in the audience can hear, try to hold down your internal discussions so that people can hear what the commenter is saying, and we can hear them as well. So please indulge us with that. With that, let's have our first three commenters.
Brad Malamud, followed by Donna Vedrine, followed by AQ.
Hello, Council. Welcome to the new city attorney. I hope this is a nice step up from Scott Smith. It can't be a step down. Could you start my time over and put on the microphone, please?
Thank you. Welcome to the new city attorney. I'm hoping that we get a lot better representation than what the city's gotten through the past with BB and K. Chris, you're wrong. The city members have every right under the Constitution, policy, and state law to ask questions to anybody that speaks at this podium. There's no policy or state law against it. What you can't do, and the city attorney will advise you on that, is you can't take actions based on what people are asking or discussing. And the council does it all the time, especially former Councilman Ward. But I want to get to the subject I came to talk about, and that's the new city manager. I think you've got a great new city manager, and I think he's responsive and has ideas and thoughts. And what's wrong with this agenda tonight is that you gave the city manager five days to work on these two items that are on the agenda tonight. You need to give him two to three months to solve problems, not just force things in front of them without an RFP, without a matrix for how you determine if it's good or bad. With a contract with BB and K that under Chris should know this, and so should Steve, when a law firm's fired, they have a duty to turn over the files immediately. And normally, as a practice, and the city attorney can talk to this, what you do is you give them a memo summarizing what's going on, and there's no charge for it. This contract also increases their rates. Increases their rates. There's a standing contract with rates on it. And they've taken the highest rates they charge, increased them, and said, "That's what we're going to charge you because you dumped us." Really? Would anybody sign that contract? And the answer is no. So just let them go. Just let them go. And you should ask the new city attorney, will that work for her? And it works for everybody else.
You're speaking to an item that's on the agenda, sir.
I will speak to that. I'm talking about conduct, how to do things, not cram them down in five days. So I appreciate that, Chris. I will speak to that item in a second. But with respect to all items coming in front of this council, don't cram things down in five days. I know that North Beach was dizzy. This may be the greatest proposals in the world, the two of them, but neither of them had time for the city manager to go through them, to have staff look at them, to look at alternatives, to do an RFP. It's time for the city council to act like a city council. No businessperson in their right mind would approve things in five days unless everything is so desperate that you're fixing a slope or you're fixing a building that fell down. Start doing your job and do it correctly, and give the city manager and the city attorney time to give you advice. There's no possibility that these items will have the advice. I've read the items. They're not even adequately done because there's no history. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Donna Vedrine, followed by AQ.
My name is Donna Vedrine, and tonight I will speak to the success of other cities in Southern California on diminishing homelessness with a real solution strategy and plan. June 2021, Oceanside City Council committed $3.5 million and 59 Section 8 housing vouchers towards a 60-unit affordable housing development to be built in Oceanside. This project will include $6 million in state funds along with private sector funding. One unit will house an onsite manager. The residents will be provided with and assertively encouraged to take advantage of onsite supportive services for physical and mental health care and other needed services. Also in June 2021, Oceanside selected San Diego Rescue Mission as a shelter operator for a 50-bed homeless shelter. The shelter will operate on a referral system by their outreach service teams, Oceanside Police Department, and other service providers. The facility will include wraparound services and daytime activities to help people develop a housing plan and assess needed services. The shelter is intended to provide a pathway towards permanent housing, income, health care, and stability through continued care services. This is paid for by Measure X, taxpayer-approved dollars. San Clemente can also be successful in diminishing homelessness. Churches and nonprofits are asking for partnership with San Clemente City leadership so together we can do more. Churches with very limited resources are helping unsheltered in extreme weather to obtain shelter overnight in local hotels and church facilities, and assisting those living in cars to pay tickets to avoid losing their only shelter, laundry love for clean clothes and blankets, and acceptance at church services with fellowship and inclusion. As a collaborative, we are working for safe parking, accessible bathrooms, showering, and shelter options while we work for supportive and accessible housing, mental health and addiction programs for those requesting assistance in San Clemente. Work with us to support and incentivize long-term supportive and affordable housing. Thank you for your time.
AQ, followed by Javier Aroni, followed by Kathy Dominakini.
Hello, councilmembers and staff.
Oh, sorry.
Hello, councilmembers. At the March 7th meeting, city council meeting, the city manager did not inform the public. The agenda was incorrect regarding the Apprea and McKellie contract. More importantly, the agenda report and the contract had numerous errors in that, and I think it was a duty for the city manager to inform the public of that. I think that would require some level of accountability. And the reason why I'm saying that is there is concern that I was looking at the San Clemente Weekly Update, the mayor's message, and the city manager's minutes, and the city manager stated that the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, stepped forward to serve their fellow residents without a moment of hesitation. The CERT team has equipment supplies and most of all talented volunteers that can provide assistance in almost any circumstances. Thank you for your quiet but competent service. I had an opportunity in speaking with the city manager right before the press conference on Buena Vista after the landslide, and he mentioned to me that there was, the city does not have an incident command system in place. So it concerns me is how quiet were they? Because obviously, the city manager didn't realize that we had a CERT team, a Community Emergency Response Team, and when the mayor stated that he didn't know how or why the Red Cross were there, they just showed up. So my concern is that the city council member should have had an emergency special meeting, and so this Community Emergency Response Team should have come forward and introduced themselves. And really, it goes to proper governance during this time, during this disaster. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that, that, you know, when was the last time this CERT team came to the city council and did a presentation of what they do? So I think it shows accountability for everybody. This was a tragic event, and luckily, there was no lives that were in the past. But I just wanted to bring this forward to you, that we should start with accountability and not have a situation where Eric 2.0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Javier, followed by Kathy Dominakini, followed by, I think it's, Danyan Sais.
Javier Aroni, how you guys doing again? Thank you for being here. Hey, just a couple really quick things. I just want to know what we are panhandling. It just seems like it's kind of getting out of hand if there's an ordinance on that. My wife and I also, since we've been 14, I don't want to tell you how old she is because she'll be upset, but we go on a lot of walks together with our grandchildren, and we walk around a lot about Lowe's and back there towards Starbucks, and there's always a lot of panhandling, and that actually makes us a little bit nervous because you don't know what to expect with the kids. So that's short, but sweet. And another thing, too, just much more simpler for you guys, is Ebonya Vista Hermosa, the traffic, I live up in Marblehead, and when you come out of the school there, Torquesas, where the tennis court is, we have to wait for that red light a really long time. And there's a school there. And I understand that Vista Hermosa, Ebonya Vista Hermosa, they don't want to really slow it down too much because it's, you know, a thoroughfare for coming off the freeway. But once you get up closer to Torquesas, the traffic has a lot of room to, let's say, call it if you will, back up. There's room for the cars. There's a school there, and that light takes forever when you're coming out of the neighborhood to change. And I've called the city engineer many times to meet me there. They said, "Oh, I've gone," and they're at Shorecliffs instead of up there at Vista Hermosa and Torquesas. So maybe we can look at that to keep our kids safe. And what ends up happening, and I see a couple of police officers back there, I just run the light. I mean, because I just wait there for so long. It's just ridiculous. I'm not going to give them my driver's license number yet, but that's what I do. So if you guys can maybe look into that and have the city engineer, please look at that. I would appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Kathy Dominakini, and I am a lifetime resident, can I move this thing, of San Clemente. I'm here today, I wrote you an email regarding this, but I'd like to ask the city council or the powers that be to give our outreach people, Carly and Troy, a discretionary account which they could use for incidents that come up. And the situation I emailed to you was I work with individuals needing assistance in the South Orange County area. I was introduced to a family, mom, dad, 17-year-old daughter, one-year-old daughter, living in their car, little tiny car. And they had been to FAM and were working with the case manager there and had applied for the FAM house. But if you know anything about that, it's usually a 90-day stay, and it takes a long time to get in. So we've been working with the family on getting storage and gas cards and things of that nature. And they called me on a Friday afternoon. Their car had been repo'd. So they're in Santa Ana, car's repo'd, one-year-old kid. Fortunately, we had a volunteer who went up to get them. But then we're like, okay, we bring them down here where all their stuff is, what do we do with them now? So we scrounged up some money and put them in a hotel. That was Friday night. I called Troy. I work with him all the time. I said, "Do you have any money to do anything for the weekend? We just got to get to Monday. We'll get them back to FAM, we'll get them up to Cal, you know, the social services, get them signed up for Cal Works, for family hotel stay." He's like, "No, I don't have any money," which I already knew. But so we had to send out our feelers for people who could donate some money to cover the hotel. And then again, on Monday, we had another volunteer who took them up to FAM, and thankfully, they got into the FAM house on Tuesday. So that was, we actually got one night back from the hotel. But it's really frustrating because things always happen, Friday night or Saturday. And our great case managers, Troy and Carly, well, Troy on the weekends, he really can't do anything. FAM's closed, most agencies are closed, county offices are closed. So I'm asking that maybe they could get a little discretionary fund in which they could affect some change for situations, and we just trust them. They're going to use the money wisely, and of course, they'll be accountable for it. But I'd like to suggest that because I've been doing this for 13 years, and it's not like life stops on a Friday. You know, it keeps going, and there's crises all the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Danine Pej, and I would like to read a letter from Sean Baker, who is, well, homeless, unsheltered, living in her car. "You only need to call the cops on the vehicles that don't move on a daily basis. Some of us, this is all we have. I used to live a couple blocks down in a blue apartment on Presidente. That is until the building was flooded due to maintenance negligence and a fire sprinkler pipe broke. My three-bedroom unit, along with two other families, were displaced and had our lives completely upended. The property management just so happened to have sold the building, oops, sorry, to a new property management the same exact week of the flood. So all that renters insurance we paid was now null and void. The first company didn't step up to take care of us, and the second company didn't want to be responsible as for the sale wasn't for two more days. It took the pleading captain of the firefighter to make the second company do something for all of us that were displaced. Thank God, they put us in a hotel room for the time being and started renovations. A week or so goes by, and we get a bill for that month's rent, the month of the flooding, plus $450 in additional new price tag onto the original $2,900. At this point, my brother had already left California. He didn't know how to take the loss, and I have no idea where he is or how he's doing. Our other roommate, which was one of our best friends, has also left San Clemente, unable to process what just happened. So I was alone with a $3,500 rent due, which I could not do by myself. So I had to forfeit the lease. I had only one option, move into my car, and yes, I am one of the people who parks on Calafia on a daily basis. I never leave any trash anywhere, I mind my own business, and work five days a week. And let me tell you, the last thing I wanted to do was to forfeit my lease." The last thing, as I said, was I didn't want to move back into the place after being treated the way they had done to us with all our personal property that was damaged was just a huge loss. So I agree with the gentleman of just saying, "Why don't you talk and ask people about the situation instead of being just not wanting to help us? Peace and love, and in God we trust." Thank you.
Thank you.
The next two speakers are Concerned Resident and Lois McNichol.
I want to welcome our new city attorney. I believe it's Ms. Mitchell. And Mayor, do you think we would have a few minutes that you could introduce her to the residents of San Clemente? I don't think she's been introduced. I know we had a very nice introduction of our new city manager. But I do have a question for our new city attorney already. The agenda does not have a approval, I'm sorry, of the attorney report of closed session. It's not on the agenda. So is that something that we no longer agendize? It's not there. Thank you for giving us the report regardless. So anyway, we're hopeful, Ms. Mitchell, that you will give accurate legal advice to our council. And council, just remember, it's still up to you. You can ignore her advice all you want, or you can listen to her and take corrective action. Mr. Hall, it is so refreshing to have a city manager who treats residents' concerns with expedience, most importantly, honesty and respect. You have no idea how much you have meant to me with the city. Thank you.
Lois McNichol, followed by Lisa Adoni.
I'd like to address a few of the items I've just heard. First of all, instead of going to FAM, why were these people not sent to the Department of Public Social Services in the very beginning? Because I know that every single district office has a homeless unit, and that is open from the time the office opens until 5:00, and if a person gets there at 5:00, they are not turned away. They will come in, and you will get temporary housing. So therefore, I'm reluctant to see how we need to give out more discretionary cash to outreach workers when there's already outreach workers in Orange County. They are in abundance in the Department of Public Social Services, and maybe they should be working with them. Maybe FAM should be working with them because they do have an abundance of resources and would be happy to help them and would be happy to work with them. So that is one thing I think that they should be doing if you are really, really want to help homeless. Because one thing that any organization who is trying to help a population that is in need will tell you is that you do not enable. And that is what free vouchers, free food, and never expecting any type of rules to be followed or laws to be upheld, that is what you're doing. You are enabling this population. You are not helping them to become responsible citizens who could have a full and rich life. Instead, they are on the beach waiting for their food, and one more thing, and then I'm out. But I went running, I go running on the beach every single day, and when I went running on the beach on Sunday morning, I was very sad because one of the volleyball nets had been torn down to the point where it could not be put back up. It was ripped apart. Now, they did put a new one back up. I was very happy to see that the city did that. But it was very, and I've lived here four years, and I go running all the time, never saw that happen before. So therefore, and Jane, homeless is equal to vagrant according to Wikipedia.
Just a reminder to keep the comments down during the public comments so that we can all hear what people are saying. Thank you.
Hi, council. Good evening. Obviously, there are a lot of passionate people here tonight, and hopefully, we'll have some idea of a way to move forward. I'll speak to the private security firm and my opinion on that in a little while when the item's agendized. But for right now, I'd like to talk about folks living the van life in San Clemente. Two weeks ago on a Sunday night, we drove around from 8:00 to a little bit after 10:00 PM, and we found 87 RVs parked on our streets from Estrella down to Calafia. We didn't go into, it was two women, so we didn't go into any unsafe areas. We didn't go into Rancho San Clemente Business Park where we know many RVs are living. And we saw a lot of interesting things. Half the folks were from out of state, a lot of expired tags, some with no license plates whatsoever, some that were inoperable, that were just towed and dropped off, but many people living in the vehicles. And you can tell because you can see the lights on, you can see the curtains, you can see people looking out at you, and it's really getting turned into an explosion. It's not surfers who want to be down at Tressils first thing in the morning, you know, at daybreak to get the best waves, although there may be a very small portion that are those individuals. And I absolutely feel for someone who lost their home due to a flood and the way the situation was handled. It's tragic. But I would urge you to take a look at, as the next step or perhaps an issue that this security company may address, is how do we handle the exploding number of RVs in San Clemente right now? Because it is urgent, and my suspicion is a portion of those folks are individuals living off the grid purposely. And that's the reason why Carly won't go approach any of those RVs by herself, and she readily admits that. She goes, "No, I won't do that. That's not a safe situation." So if our outreach worker, our female outreach worker won't do it, you know, it shows that there's a problem that exists. So I would encourage you to take this into your consideration when we're taking a look at what potentially could happen to help return San Clemente to the safe, secure community that we all know and love and that we want our families and our children to enjoy. Thank you.
That's it for oral communications. So if you're ready, we can move on to item number two.
Yes. Oh, you have a card for oral communications?
I think these are all under item three.
It's Jill Watson.
Jill, did you have a card for oral communications or a different item?
I can go real quick, and she's waiting.
What's your name?
Dennis Grimes.
Okay, so you've got it under security.
Well, that's what we're talking about, right? Homeless people?
No, that's agenda item number three. And Jill Watson, I'm looking.
I want to talk about the homeless.
Okay.
May I?
I think he should go now.
I need two minutes.
What was your name, sir?
Dennis Grimes.
Okay, he'd like to speak broadly about homeless, so let's have you speak now, sir.
Thank you. So thank you for giving me a couple, three minutes here. I'll be really, really brief on a subject I know a little bit about. I'm not going to talk about your agenda, your civil codes, what you're doing right or wrong, but first of all, I want to say I am guilty of what I'm about to discuss. So for many, many years, I owned an office building in Dana Point. Many of you know, it's got all the elephants out front up on Del Prado and Golden Manor. And I used to get food donations from my church, and my son and I would feed homeless people in the parking lot on the weekends. And there were very expensive homes and condos in the back, and pretty soon, the homeless people started gathering and camping on the weekends, and the city got a number of complaints about me and letters. The people were urinating on their landscaping, and so they came down and asked me to quit. So I did. I wrapped it up and left, and they all moved down to Del Hany Beach. Long story short, my mother and I had a restaurant for 30 years in North Beach, and I used to go in at 6:00 in the morning and open it up, and I would feed some of the homeless people out the back door. And they knew me. They all knew me, and I've been to these meetings before, and I'm going to tell you what the problem is, okay, and a way to fix it, okay? I heard the word "enable," and there it is right there. I'm guilty. What happens is we've all got this feeling of compassion. We want to help. We want to feel good. We're an affluent society because we make good money, we live in big homes, we want to do something nice. It makes our serotonin and dopamine push when we do something nice and feel good. When I have two cocktails and take a cab home, I come back the next day, my car's gone. It costs me $700 to get it out of impound. Why do I have to pay, and they get to live in theirs? I mean, if you force them to come up here by FAM and you feed them up here, and you make them park their car up here, and you give them food up here, then they won't be hanging around the train station. I've sat on the patio with clients and friends, watched tourists get off the train on a Friday afternoon, homeless people walk up to them without even asking, and the tourists will put $10, $20 in their hand just so they feel good about taking their two or three days off, and that's why they're at North Beach. They got a huge parking lot, they got lots They got a huge parking lot, they got lots of walkers and joggers and tourists that, you know, would rather just give them money and tell them to hang out and sleep and eat there. We make their life very simple. We need to start finding the people like myself that used to give food away and make it easy for them and make them quit supporting them. My mom used to come in the restaurant at 9:00, and there would be people in the bathroom. Our customers couldn't use it because the homeless people were in there taking baths. And she said, "Don't you know why they put signs up at the park that says 'Don't Feed the Bears'?" I said, "Oh, yeah." She goes, "Well, quit doing it, damn it." And that's what everybody in this town does, you know? We're all rich, we live this big fancy life and big fancy Ocean View houses. It makes us feel good to do something nice for somebody else. Start finding the people that feed the bears, and thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Did we find Ms. Watkins' card? Okay, Ms. Watkins?
Watson.
Watson, I'm sorry.
Oh, Watson.
My name's Jill Watson. I've been a homeowner here in San Clemente for 40 years. I have seen a lot of changes, and I'm just trying to support and keep our town like it was way back when. There are so many things changing. I wasn't intending to speak, but I started taking notes when everyone was speaking. So a couple of my comments are, why are we taking care of people who don't even live in San Clemente? I mean, how many people do we help? And they just come down here knowing, "Oh, I can live on the beach, I can get fed by Donovan Dreams Church, I can do whatever I want to do." And who wouldn't want to live in San Clemente? I worked my butt off to live here and to buy a home. So that kind of bugs me, and we can't expect every city, when I keep hearing this, you know, "Oh, we need a shelter in San Clemente." I mean, we don't need a shelter in San Clemente. There's some in Santa Ana, there in Laguna Beach, they're everywhere. You can't expect the whole state to, every city in this state of California, to have a shelter. It's just not reasonable. I listened to North Beach, I was there, I was at the last city council meeting, and they talked about financially, we can't support that. It is supposed to be, you know, government, federal government, and that sort of thing. It is not our job with our taxpayer money to build a shelter, to take care of people from LA, Arizona, wherever they come from. And it's just wrong. Most of our homeless, and like I said, I've been here a long time, I know a lot of them, I've been around, they don't want help. They are service resistant. They don't want help. If they wanted help, they could get help in Santa Ana, Laguna Beach. I mean, move up the road a little bit. If you are a San Clemente resident, that's one thing, but, you know, they talk, they get on the phone, come to San Clemente. I was at Lowe's the other day, leaving, there was the gypsy group that always hang out, and, you know, I took a picture of him because I drove up and he's sitting there with his little family and a child, and, "Oh, we're so, you know, poor," and everything. And then he saw me take that picture, man, he took that sign, he went like this, and he went away, and that was it. They're not homeless people, they're working for someone. They're gypsies, and they're, again, taking care of the poor people that think, what this other gentleman said, you know, you feel good about it. What else? Get help or go to jail. That was something they talked about at the North Beach. It's like, I can take you to a shelter, there's plenty of help, like Lois said. She knows. So that's it.
Sorry. Your time is done. Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda.
That was, okay, that was the last.
That was it for oral communications. Contract award, special counsel services agreement with Best Bustin Krieger for transitional city attorney services. We have two speaker cards. First is Brad Malamud, followed by concerned residents.
Hello, counsel. What a joke. The city attorney could talk to us, she apparently doesn't talk to things, but we'll see. When transition occurs, firms are fired, they turn over the files by law under the state bar rules, and the new firm takes over. This happens all the time, litigation and corporate work, et cetera, et cetera. The old firm doesn't charge to transition the files. This is another Scott Smith, he can't find another way. He already has 14 or plus million dollars in the city, let's just make some more. You know, there's never an end date for him. It's time to say no. Scott, have the city manager and city attorney meet with Scott, make sure the files are properly transferred to Burke Williams and Sorensen's desire, get on those files, and meet with him if they have to. But this contract, you might note, is at the highest rates they bill, not at the retainer rates, which are about $100 an hour less expensive. So he's screwing you on his way out. You know, it's a great thing to do. No, here's the solution to this problem. Don't sign this contract, don't agree to this contract, and let Andy and Elizabeth meet with him if they need to. Limit any work to an hour or two at the most. Most law firms give a transition memo, and that takes care of it. Trust your city manager and city attorney to handle this. No new contract. Scott by law has to transfer these files. And again, my theme tonight is, you didn't give the city manager or city attorney any time, how did this contract wind up on your desk, on your dais tonight? And more importantly, where's Scott to support this contract? Where's Scott to explain this contract? He's not going to show up here when he's not being paid. So this is all a grift. It's a grift, and it's time to stop this grift. And if I'm wrong, let Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Hall, tell me I'm wrong, but I'm not wrong on this one. Thank you.
I've learned so much coming to these council meetings. A prior speaker has, on several council sessions, advised that the BB&amp;K contract specifically required that Mr. Smith or Mr. Richardson were the only ones approved to provide legal services to the city. The speaker also noted that there were many, many city council meetings where an unauthorized representative appeared on behalf of BB&amp;K. So is it true that we only owed money to BB&amp;K for Richardson and Scott's services? And if that's the case, has anybody done anything to recoup our payments that the city made, in my opinion erroneously? So if that is the assessment, I would suggest that rather than signing any contract with BB&amp;K, you simply start deducting any hours he gives to you off of what he owes us in return for not showing up for the council meetings. Thank you. The final speaker card I have on this item is AQ.
Yeah, I was, hello, council members. I was really concerned at how this contract award came on the agenda. I was really concerned, especially after my PowerPoint presentation about the Apprea McKelley report, because in that contract, there was numerous mistakes, and I had my attorney review it, and, you know, he realized the impact of that contract and all the mistakes, and how he allowed this contract to go through year after year, and when there was only one time that could have one amendment. So I'm really concerned about that. We had good speakers, wonderful speakers tonight regarding the Best Bustin Krieger, but I'm really concerned of how this is happening. He was absent for a long period of time, and I think he really owes the city council a check. He needs to refund money for all the mistakes he's done, and of the time that he wasn't here, fulfilling his duties. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
First of all, I want to welcome Elizabeth from Burke Williams Sorensen. We'll have to do a formal welcome at the regular city council meeting that we have next. But I also probably should have given the city manager a chance to give a brief staff report perhaps on this item if there is any further information you'd like to convey, otherwise we'll go into discussion.
Thank you, mayor. I do think that the proposal we filed with the city council is relatively straightforward. There's a request for approval of a special counsel services agreement between Best Bustin Krieger and the city for a transition period between the services of Best Bustin Krieger and the new services that will be provided by Burke Williams and Sorensen. The rates that have been proposed have been discussed a little bit tonight for partners and of council would be $380 per hour. Associates, directors of government affairs, if utilized, would be $335 per hour, and paralegals, law clerks, analysts, and pension consultants would be $185. One of the things I would like to note, and it's in the staff report, that these costs need to be closely monitored by the city manager for cost containment and reported to the city council on a regular basis. Should the city council approve this contract, we want to keep the transition period as quick and as inexpensive as possible.
Thank you. Do any council members have questions of the city manager?
I do. And maybe this is a question jointly for you and Elizabeth. How many hours would we anticipate would be needed to close the loop on any loose ends?
I did have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Smith the last day that he was serving the city. He anticipated that it might take as much as a half a day to make that transition between the services, basically to download some of those files and talk a little bit about them with the new council. And then at that point, I think he would like to step back and step away. But I would let, you know, the attorney Mitchell speak for herself, but he thought probably about a half a day.
Would you be open to the city council giving you a cap to be spent? I mean, if it's four hours, I mean, we can round that up and call that a cap of $2,000. Would that be reasonable?
That would certainly be at the discretion of the mayor and council. That would be possible.
Councilmember Cabral.
I had the opportunity to talk to our new council city attorney today, and if I could ask her about that transition, because I think she has some insight into that. And the transition will take, I hope you can hear me, the transition will take place, but it has to be done orderly, and that transition's going to take a little bit of time. So maybe you can explain a little bit how you envision that process working and how much time it'll take.
Thanks, counsel.
And why it can't be done in one day.
Thank you, councilmember Cabral.
Is your mic?
Thank you, councilmember Cabral. I just need to hold it very close to my mouth. So advisory services can be transferred immediately. This contract I would envision is for litigation, so it will be up to the council to decide on a case-by-case basis which litigation is being transferred. There may be some where it's decided where it will not be transferred. That'll be up to the council. But conflicts checks have to be run, so that's not an instantaneous transfer. And I have, I can't give you an estimate of how many hours it will take to have those cases continue to be appropriately attended to while the council is deciding whether to transfer them over.
But I understand the process to be is that you will take a case, evaluate it with Scott Smith, see if it makes more sense to take it immediately, or to, if it's at the end of the litigation, maybe it doesn't make as much sense to step into a case. But you will do that, bring each of those cases to the city council, say with a recommendation as to how you think we should proceed.
With the correction that I will not be taking direction from the former city attorney, I will evaluate each case and make a recommendation to council in closed session, and those will be done, you know, one at a time.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other thing. I never thought I'd say this, but I think maybe Mr. Malamud has a point. Maybe this came out, maybe this came out too early. Maybe we need to see what cases, what litigation is out there that potentially BB&amp;K needs to either keep or pass on to Ms. Mitchell. It would be my recommendation that you come back, not April 4th, but April 18th, for a full report on what that would look like. Because right now, we don't, none of us have a clue what that looks like. So I'm, you know, Mr. Mayor, it's okay, I'll make a motion that the city.
Let's hold off on motion, because I think we may have, we may have some more questions and discussion. Yeah, thank you.
My thoughts on this are.
We're still questioning right now. I just want to make sure, before we move on, that, does anyone have any other questions for the city manager or city attorney?
Just a quick question. How important is it to, in order for you to carry on the business of the city, that we expedite this process, or that it be delayed?
This contract is really about the litigation that's pending, and having a firm continue to do what needs to be done on that litigation that's necessary in the process would serve the city's best interest. So there's a difference between, you know, working up a file as aggressively as you would if you knew you were going to keep the case versus monitoring it and doing what needed to be done, say, over the next few weeks to a month while it was pending council decision on whether it was going to stay with your firm or not. So there is a duty for attorneys to continue to be representing clients on cases before they're formally substituted out. So you're not allowed to leave a client without representation.
Is it normal practice in this type of a situation where that the prior city attorney is compensated for that time, to your knowledge, spent working with the new city attorney to potentially transition that legal work?
So it's less about me working with the former city attorney, it's more about the litigators at BB&amp;K continuing to work on the pending litigation matters.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. So if we don't approve this, they will be obligated to continue to work as an ethical standard of being an attorney, but there wouldn't be authorization to pay them for that continuing work until you or your firm take over those cases.
That's correct. So what would happen if you didn't approve the contract is they would be required to continue to work. The city would not be paying them, but they would have a claim against the city for reimbursement for the value of their services.
Okay. And going back to the original question, then, it would seem that, given that's the case, that it's more common that you do engage in this kind of a contract so that that firm, your prior firm continues, or your prior city attorney continues to represent you and doesn't have to file a claim, I guess, at the end of that.
It would be typical to continue to pay your litigators to litigate your cases while you decide whether they are continuing or not.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, let's start with discussion. Mayor Protem Novak?
Yeah, my comments on this case are, in my 45 years of legal practice, I've substituted dozens probably of cases from one law firm to another, having managed many, many hundreds of cases by outside counsel. I've never had a law firm charge me for legal work after they've been substituted out. BBK has received from the city millions, many, many millions of dollars in fees. For them to request, and I understand the request, if you don't ask, you don't get, but I can understand the request for continued contract services, but I can't support the motion. I think they're duty-bound to provide the care, and it's even at a higher rate than they would be under the existing contract. So I also had Mr. Malamud's comments resonate with me along those regards. The litigation will be analyzed, and it will be transitioned in due course. I'm totally confident that'll occur, and so those are my comments. I won't be supporting this contract.
Okay. Any other comments for discussion?
I'll just give you my quick impressions. I've also substituted out and in cases when you're in litigation. in cases. When you're in litigation, though, even though you have an obligation, I think the BB&amp;K firm will do all they do, all they need to do in that litigation. They're required to by law. You can't just substitute out. But we have, they also have a longstanding relationship with our city. They know a lot that's happened, and I think we're going to depend on them in the future, even for, you know, minor advice. You know, all these are big law firms, and this law firm cannot handle everything, and it may not be BB&amp;K, but we want, I think we want to maintain a good relationship with the firm that's represented us for years, that understands what our issues are, that has the records, even though they can turn over all the records, being able to call someone and say, what was this issue? And them being able to answer in a matter of 15 minutes is better than having our law firm have a roomful of documents that would have to run through those thousands and thousands of documents to figure out what the real substance of that case is. So I think the transition will happen, hopefully, very quickly. I mean, that's our request. I want to keep a good relationship with our outgoing firm, only because I think we will need them for a small amount of advice on what took place under their watch over the years. And I think it's the right thing to do to compensate them. I don't like the rate. And I think, you know, when you're litigating, you're doing your very best. And as a litigator, you want to do your very best, and I expect them to continue doing it, and I'm sure they will. But they'll still have a claim against us afterwards that we'll have to pay. So I would rather have the good relationship and pay them, and transition as quickly as possible into this new law firm.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on--
I'm going to go back to what I said earlier. I want to have an idea. I agree with Mr. Cabral 100%, but I want to, before--
Can everyone hear?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I want to have an idea before I vote for this. What am I voting for? What's, what's, what's the dollar amount? I would, I would like to see a report from either the city attorney or the city manager, whichever is appropriate, on what we anticipate that that amount is going to be, and how quickly can, can we sever that tie with BB&amp;K. This report doesn't help me understand that. So consequently, I will support keeping a good relationship with BB&amp;K. I fully understand that they can answer, their litigators, or Scott could probably answer a question in 15, 20 minutes, what's going to take Elizabeth two or three hours to do research on. But I need to know, not know for certain, but have an estimate of what we're talking about here.
Any further discussion over on this side? Okay. Just to clarify the point that the mayor Protim made, I think the point is they're actually not substituted out on the litigation yet, right? So they're still the attorney of record. And it appears to me that it's common practice, and it makes sense, as councilmember Cabral said, that you maintain that relationship, you continue to compensate them. The city manager and council is firmly in control of, and working with our new city attorney, of transitioning that litigation. But in the interim, when they still represent us, and we haven't had our new city attorney step in in that litigation, I think we need to make sure we have a contract in place with BB&amp;K that we can closely monitor, but that, that sets us up to maintain that relationship and fairly compensate them for this interim time of, of legal services that they're providing in these litigation cases.
In response, I would just like to say that I agree. BBK's a professional firm. They represent dozens of municipalities across Southern California, Northern California, and I believe even out of state. And there's no question in my mind that they'll be responsive, that as litigation's transitioned, they'll answer questions. I don't think they would slow-walk or drag the case out just because, out of spitefulness or vindictiveness toward the city. They, it's in their best interest to keep good, good relations with all the municipalities, because their reputation is what sells, what sells their business. So I'm confident the work will be done, and will be done professionally, in due course, in a timely fashion. But I don't think we should be paying them this amount just to do what the profession requires them to do anyway. So I won't be supporting that.
Okay, do we have, do we have any motions?
I'll move to approve and authorize the city manager to execute contract number C-23-15, special counsel services agreement by and between the city of San Clemente and Best Best and Krieger, providing for special counsel services by the city, for the city of San Clemente, effective March 27, 2023.
Mr. Mayor, I have a friendly amendment to that motion, and that friendly amendment would be to add that at our April 18 meeting, staff, whether that's city attorney or city manager, comes back to us and give us an estimate to what that amount is going to be.
Okay, okay, so you--
I'm seconding his motion, by the way.
Okay, we have Cabral seconding Enmeyer on the motion to approve the staff recommendation. We have a friendly amendment offered to approve the contract, as I understand it, but just add that there would be a report back, at which meeting?
April 18.
April 18, second meeting in April, about, with an estimate about what those costs are.
I can accept that.
Okay.
Friendly amendment, yes.
Amendment's accepted. Do you accept that from, as the second?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Enmeyer?
Yes, aye.
Mayor Protim Nobak?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. The motion passes. We have Mayor Protim Nobak as the one dissent. No applause for that one, huh? Okay. All right, on to, on to the main item, item three. Do you want to announce the item, city clerk?
Consideration of Resolution 2310, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between Gatekeeper Security Services, Inc. and the city of San Clemente for security services on a trial basis.
Okay, as we start this, want to make sure for all councilmembers, do any councilmembers have any disclosures on this issue? Okay, no, seeing none. And, oh, yes.
Maybe just disclosure that I've, I've received hundreds of emails from residents on this issue.
Nothing that would cause you any reason to recuse or anything from this?
No.
Okay. No other councilmembers? Okay. I think as we will start off, I would like to give, because Gatekeepers here is the, well, first of all, do we want a presentation from the city manager?
It's a very short presentation. Mayor and council, as you know, we are a mission-driven organization, and the first clause of our mission statement as a city is maintaining a safe, healthy atmosphere in which to live, work, and play. And so that becomes one of our primary duties as an organization. So one of the things we want to point out is we have great law enforcement. It's provided by the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and we have a lot of hard-working employees that are both park rangers and code compliance, and they do a great job as well. But there's kind of this gap right now where we're seeing an increase in some of the violations of our municipal code. And so the idea is to maybe augment the services that we get from the more traditional law enforcement services from the Orange County Sheriff, and the more ambassador-type service that we expect from our code compliance and our park rangers, with a private security firm to help us implement some of the provisions of the municipal code. So again, the one thing that we'd be looking at is this would need to be a pilot project. We haven't had an opportunity to work with this firm. We need to make sure that there are measurable results if we move into this type of situation. And you can see that, I won't read it to you, but you can see the kinds of things that we would be looking at, and some of the things we want to make sure are being enforced with our municipal code. But we also need to make sure that we come back in 60 days, and we report to the city council. And we want to make sure that we're tracking, and they have some, some ways of tracking the interactions that they're going to have with people. They have both body worn cameras. They also have GPS, so that we can come back and we can express to the city council the number of interactions, whether or not they are increasing, whether they are decreasing, where they are located. And so we hope that after this period, we can come back with the city council with a lot of data about where these interactions are happening, what time of day, where they're located, some of those kinds of things. So I think that it's, it's really important to note that if, if the city council is so inclined to move in this direction, that staff is highly recommending that this be a pilot project rather than a long-term contract, as we need to understand, then we would come back and ask the city council how we'd like to proceed after that initial point. So if, if the city council is inclined to move in this direction, Resolution 2310 would authorize the city manager to work with the Gatekeepers International, or Gatekeepers Security to create a contract for services. At this point in time, we have a proposal that the city council has had an opportunity to read. There is not a contract that has been developed simply because of time, but we would, that would be the next action that we would look into. So with that, Mayor, there's nothing else that the staff has to present.
Okay. Okay, thank you, city manager. I do want to invite Gatekeepers up potentially to just introduce yourself and potentially answer questions, but do any councilmembers have questions of the city manager on this item? Yeah, Mayor Protim Nobak?
City manager, could you explain the need for this in terms of the operational gap that your PowerPoint presented? What would prevent the city from increasing their park rangers, their senior patrol, the code enforcement, to fill, to fill that operational gap before we spend the money on a contract like this? We could, we could do that internally. You're correct. We could increase the number of park rangers that we have. We could also change the qualifications that we're looking for in some of our park rangers, so that they do have some training in terms of maybe more enforcement activities rather than the ambassador activities. We also could go the other direction. We could increase our contract that we have with the Orange County Sheriff, certainly employ more sheriffs to have, to have that as well. So there are any number of options before the city. All of those options are available, and that the city council could consider any of those. But I do believe that there probably is a gap between those traditional law enforcement services and the role that we're asking our park rangers to play at this point in time. And that might be why we're seeing kind of an uptick in some of the violations happening of the municipal code. Do the current, do the park rangers issue citations presently for city code violations? They do have that ability. And would the gatekeepers also have citation authority under this contract? Staff would recommend that we refrain from doing that, especially during a trial period, that if there was a need to either issue a citation, or if there was need for more traditional law enforcement, that the, that the gatekeepers would be asked to engage with either our park rangers or the sheriff, as would be appropriate. In the contract, how many, how much time we're talking about? Two months, 130,000 per month, 24/7 service? How many individuals are involved? Do you know, about how many individuals and how many hours roughly? Yeah, in talking with the firm, in order to have four people on 24/7, that's about 14 personnel. And there would be four personnel on at any given time, a minimum of four, on any given time, as well as a minimum of four vehicles in the, in the community. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of the city manager? Councilmember Enmeyer?
Quick question. You had about, we gave you about two days to find this and bring it back to us. Were you able at that, at that time to have time to look at other services? Was it just this one that you had opportunity for?
At this point in time, the only service that I've looked at is Gatekeepers. I have not had an opportunity to look at other firms. Okay, thank you. If that was the question you asked.
Any other questions of the city manager?
City manager, if we were to look at increasing our cadre of, of park rangers, number one, we would have to upgrade from the current job description. Would you agree with that?
I think you would probably want a different, at least some of those personnel would need to have a different focus. That would be correct.
Number two, we've had problems recruiting for park rangers, have we not?
Yeah, that's correct.
How long would you anticipate it would take to, to train a cadre, a new cadre of park rangers to, to address our public safety concerns?
That's a little difficult to answer, only because I don't know what skills they would come with. So a lot of that would be dependent on the skills that we were able to hire, that the people that would be willing to come to work for us. So it'd be highly dependent on the skills that they bring with them.
And would you, would you agree that one of the benefits of contracting as opposed to hiring employees is the ability to contract and expand services as, as the need arises?
Yeah, that's, yes. If this is, if this approach is not successful, for example, if we come back to the city council in 60 days and we decide that this was not the right approach, at that point, you could terminate the contract. Once you do have full-time personnel, especially in a municipal setting, it is a little bit more challenging to, to relieve employees of their employment.
And, you know, right now, your, your city staff is coming back and saying, not recommending giving the, the Gatekeepers organization the, is it 832 authorization, the PC 832 authority to cite authorization. The, but that would be a possibility in the future, would it not?
Yes, absolutely. That's possible.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I just have one, one final question. Was, is, is funding the private security here, is that in the city's budget?
No, the, when we came back with the contract, which would probably be on April 18, or maybe the first meeting in May, there would have to be an allocation likely from the, the unassigned fund balance of the general fund.
Okay.
How large is that reserve fund?
It's, it's about 14 million right now.
And what is, what is the unassigned portion of the general fund for?
So the unassigned fund balance allows us to have good cash management. As you know, cities, cities, first, you want to have a rainy day fund, but then also, cities' revenues don't come in on a constant basis, but our expenses go out on a constant basis. For example, property taxes only come in twice a year. They come in basically in December, and then once again in April. So you do have to have some fund balance for, for cash management purposes, and then also just for any emergency situations that might arise.
Okay. And would, would this have an impact on that unif, on that fund balance?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions of the city manager?
I have one more. So currently, there's a requirement that our fund, our reserve fund balance is above 18%. Is that correct?
Well, that's been the policy of the city council, to try and keep it at the 18% mark. That is correct.
But there's an accounting standard for that as well?
Yeah, that's a general, that's a generally accepted accounting standard. That's what you would like to have. Some cities are much higher than that, some cities are much lower, but that's a, that's a good, that's a really good mark to shoot for.
And I believe right now, we're at about almost 20%?
About 20%, that's correct.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, so as I mentioned, and this is a little surprise for Gatekeepers folks, but I would like to offer the opportunity to come up, if there's a spokesman, for, yeah, for Gatekeepers, come on up to the podium and introduce yourself. And then, any questions that councilmembers have, we can, we can do a question and answer right now as well.
Hello, my name is Grant Norman. I'm the owner, operative of Gatekeeper Security Services Incorporated. It's a pleasure to be here and speak to all of you.
You can lift the mic up, so you don't--
I'll probably have to, yeah.
You can just pick it up and hold it.
Yeah.
There you go.
How's this?
That's better.
Okay. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have while we're doing. We've been operational in Oceanside since October of last year. Similar sort of thing where they were having a problem, I mean, as was brought up before, Oceanside has a lot of things that they're trying to tackle. They've brought a lot of things forward, and they have reached out to us and just said, hey, why don't we try something like this in the downtown area? How do we try something a little bit different? How do we try security that is a constant presence for public safety? And it was also a kind of a trial program there. They said, we have this many calls coming into police dispatch, we have this many issues happening, we have graffiti, we have all these type of things in this particular area downtown, and we would like to see if you guys could make a difference. They asked us if we would kind of similarly, do maybe like a report within six months, and we said we would rather do it more frequently than that. We did it a monthly basis, because we are very convinced that we can prove the efficacy of our program very quickly. of our program very quickly. And we have already, within the timeframe allotted, created a massive deficit in calls to police for services in the area. Anyone who's been in Oceanside before we were there and goes there now will be able to testify to the fact that the downtown landscape has radically changed in public safety and in business and in the flow of traffic. If you go to any one of the meetings that Main Street holds, every single meeting you will have people who run businesses, who have shops, who shop there, who will come in of their own volition simply to say, hey, since this company has been here and this program has been instituted, our sales have gone up, people have said they feel safe coming in. We even had businesses say, we were intending to leave Oceanside and do business somewhere else until this company came in and they convinced us to stay because we can operate as a successful business again because people feel safe downtown. And that's primarily what I'm going for. You know, a lot of people tonight were talking about the issue of homelessness and which I'm very empathetic towards. But my main issue is, can it be safe? Are we going to focus on safety? I really, really hope that there is a solution for people who are without shelter. I really, really hope that there's a solution for people that, you know, are down on their luck or need problems with substance abuse, need rehab, need anything like that. But my main concern honestly is simply, do we have a safe place for the people who live in the city to work, live, play, et cetera, et cetera? And that's what we're trying to facilitate here. I live in San Clemente. I live, I've only lived here since November, but you know, even so far, I've had situations where I've come home and I've had people standing outside my front door screaming at the sky, yelling, flailing, and you know, I went down to the shops and said, hey, how long has this person been here? And they said they've been here for four hours now. Four hours is a very long time. And they said, well, you know, what's being done? They said, nothing can be done. They just have to stay out here. I was able to go down and speak with them and they moved along within seven to eight minutes. I did not have to get aggressive. Our company does not get violent. Our company does not, you know, push people around. We simply talk to people. That's what we do. We simply talk to people in an effort to make the area safer. I have a lot of experience with this. My company has a lot of experience with this, and that's what we hope to both bring in and facilitate here in San Clemente.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much for that presentation. Do we have any questions?
I do have a couple of questions.
Microphone.
Yes. I've had the opportunity to go and visit Oceanside, see how you operate, your presence in the city. I've met some of the staff there. Maybe you could introduce them to see.
Oh, yeah. This is to the left here, or it'd be to the right for most people, is Wyatt Kramer. He's my operations manager.
You want to stand up?
Thank you. Shouldn't we be awarded this contract? You'll see a lot of Wyatt. He's one of the guys that makes Oceanside very successful. This is Aaron Castro. He is my manager from the, from my Riverside region. We do a lot of contracts with the county of Riverside, so he oversees all that. So he was out here today doing some work and I just asked him to join us for the meeting.
One of the things I saw when I was there is the presence of your vehicles which are marked, they're visible. Can you tell us about that? Because in the short visits I've had, you see them all over the area.
Yeah, we have our guys constantly patrolling and the vehicle is an excellent deterrent. I mean, that's one of the things too that we've found successful is just people are less likely to get into any sort of trouble if they feel that any second, you know, a vehicle could come by. If there's a vehicle that's very, very visible and very, very bright, sometimes we have lights in certain scenarios, but we also use it as a safety mechanism for our employees as well. A lot of times people will get aggressive and will get a little bit perturbed by enforcement of city ordinances. And we have had, you know, we have had success with people being in a vehicle. It just seems to get the job done a little bit quicker. It maintains a very, very visible presence to people and it, it really allows for us to get the job done very quickly.
Would you say one of the biggest differences is your presence there and that your presence at a site on a constant basis?
Yeah, I mean, if someone is intending to do something, if someone's intending to spray paint a building, if someone's intending to commit any sort of vandalism, if they see that our guys are going by every five to 10 minutes and at random intervals, they're not going to take the risk that, you know, that they won't be interrupting what they're planning to do.
And what about recording of?
So we have recording apparatuses in the vehicles. We also have body cams that we have running with every interaction and that we have those all logged. We also have a proprietary software that we use that is used to basically keep a full database of every person we run across and the type of things that happen with that interaction, including referrals to service. We want to see if the people that we're running across are receptive, you know, if there's someone who are without a house or someone who's, you know, in a certain situation that requires help from other organizations, if they are receptive to that help. We want to keep a running log and saying, hey, you know what, at these times at these places, we offer these facilities, we put them in contact with these people. We want to be able to see if the type of help they're being offered is actually effective to their needs, and we can keep a log of that as well.
So you work closely then with, in the case of San Clemente, with the code enforcement and the service coordinators, trying to help and assist people that may have stumbled into our city, maybe even just looking for directions or a place. Are you able to offer that kind of service to?
We like to put people in contact with those who can. You know, obviously we ourselves don't offer those services, but we'd like to basically be a handshake in between those who do and those who need them because we are 24/7. We're going to run across people in certain times of the day that other people will not run across because most people keep normal hours. You know, people have a normal, you know, 40-hour week and there's only a certain amount of people who can do things. We run across people who would otherwise go unnoticed by the rest of the population. And we are able to offer them, we're basically able to see them. We're able to see them when other people cannot, and that's one of the advantages as well. You know, there might be someone that's only active between 2:00 to 8:00 in the city, you know, in the morning, and they're not going to maybe get the opportunity to have the same sort of services that other people would, which we can put them in contact with them should they be receptive to receive them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So if we were to go down the road with gatekeepers, would you agree that within 60 to 90 days we would be able to address our public safety issues and probably cut back from four, you know, four officers, four vehicles to probably two 60 or 90 days out?
I have zero doubt in my mind that the problem would receive a drastic reduction within the 60-day period. What we would have to change up at that point will of course be up for discussion. I have no clue what the city will look like, what the needs will be then, but I do know for a fact that we will create a noticeable difference in the landscape of the city towards a more safe city.
One of the issues that I don't fully understand at this time is how are we going to measure success?
Measuring success will become, well, there's, I guess, a couple of ways to measure success. One will be obviously the proof is in the pudding, which is one with things we say to people when you don't want to go into hard data analytics for Oceanside. We'll still have people who lived there, people who conduct business there, people who've conducted tourism there will say, do you remember what it was like before October? Take a look at it now. And anyone who's familiar with that area will tell you with complete confidence that it's a different location than it was before because of our presence. Now, for the more technical side of things, the data we collect, we will be able to look at things like that as well, including dispatch calls, right? How often are the sheriffs being called for service in this area once we're here? How many problems do we have? How many types of vandalism do we have? What type of things do we see within our own collection? And what type of patterns do we begin to notice developing over time? The more interactions we see, the more things we can track, the more patterns we can establish and say, hey, look, we are having this many contacts and issues at this, you know, for the first week. We can say, week number one, we have 150 contacts, right? Week number two, we're down to 130. Week number four, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Week number 10. We can measure these things out through all of the data or the software that we use and all of the hardware that we use in order to basically track every interaction and figure out what type of services are needed, what type of, I guess, threats has been presented to the city in those situations, and how often that begins to decline as the time goes down. We can show an empirical set of data that would, I guess, demonstrate what trends are going and if they're downward trends.
And then, I would like for you to discuss with us recruitment, selection, training, retention.
So recruitment, we run through, we have, we have a company that does that. We have managers that do specifically recruitment. We try to focus a lot, we give preferential hiring treatment to people who are veterans and military because they've received a lot of, training is working as unit already. We prefer hiring through active duty or veterans, though we are not discriminatory if someone is not, obviously, though we do have preferences. We just find that it makes the kind of cohesion of the unit as a whole work a bit smoother. Training becomes standard. Every guard in California must have, you know, their guard card that goes through the BSIS. Additionally, though, we work with our guards in person on a strong de-escalation. We are a full-contact company, which means that we do engage with people. We don't just simply sit in our car and take a picture and move along and send a report. We do expect people to engage and we do understand that oftentimes when you tell certain people, you know, this activity that you're engaging in right now, you cannot do anymore, they respond more aggressively, you know, than what we consider ideal. We don't want to escalate things. We need to focus heavily on de-escalation because we want peaceful resolutions. We want people to just say, hey, you know what? Okay, I get it, and move along. The reason I brought up my interaction before was that's what we, the direction I took, you know? Once you've been trained, once you understand how to do this, once you understand how to interact with people, you can diffuse most situations extremely quickly. It doesn't have to get elevated, doesn't have to get aggressive. You can simply bring down the level of the conversation and people can walk away amicably from any scenario. Obviously, that's not a guarantee that will happen 100% of the time, but that is our primary objective when dealing with people is strictly de-escalation.
And talk about your ability to have community relations, particularly as it relates to merchants and business people. Do you, do your officers walk?
Yes. So that's one of the other things too, is besides having the vehicles, we do have a constant foot presence in the cities we're in. If you were to go down to downtown Oceanside, if you ask any single merchant, do you know who Wyatt is? They'll know exactly. They'll know Wyatt, they see Wyatt every day, they know our guards by name, they have a strong relationship with them. We want to begin facilitating something more than strictly just like a guard program because Oceanside, and again, this is not to try to parade our success that we've had in Oceanside. We've gotten to the point where the conflicts and I would say major, major areas that were conflicts before have gone down to where the city has said, why don't we begin transitioning to ambassadorship program, right? Where you have the guards walking on their feet, you guys can be kind of mobile, mobile ambassadors for the city. If someone, you know, is in the middle of the night, they say, hey, I parked near the other side of the town, would you guys be able to come over and help me walk to my vehicle just so I feel safe? Would you be able to give me directions here or there? We want to have a very strong community element with that. We want to make sure that the guards are known, that we have a strong workforce at the beginning that stays consistent so the business owners know who these guards are. They're not impersonal, they're not just, you know, a number or a badge. They know them by their names, that the guards are going by on a daily basis, seeing if there's things they need, seeing if there's problems that are happening, and willing to assist in anything they might need as a community, which is what we're beginning to transition into in Oceanside very soon. And again, I think that's a good thing, to the point where safety has become such a norm in the downtown. It's like, hey, now we need to make sure that the guards that we have can kind of wear multiple hats at once. They can show people around, they can give advice, they can stand with a sign, you know, they're going to build a, like a kiosk downtown just so they can say, hey, if you need questions, come up and talk to one of the gatekeepers. They can direct you if you need assistance, this and that. That's ultimately the goal of everywhere we have. We want things to be safe, we want the people to be able to have a very, very personal touch to the experience that we have, not just a security company or whatever, but people that they know, people that they know who are invested in the community.
Last two questions.
Yeah.
You have training manuals.
Correct.
And your guards have to go through modules and pass each module?
Correct.
In your training? Who developed your training modules for you?
So the training developed modules were partially run through just a basic security company. We asked for their, kind of their skeletal version of all the things that are, you know, California code compliant. However, we've added to them additionally as we saw it fit according to our standards.
Very good. City attorney, oh, city manager, have you had an opportunity to speak with the city manager in Oceanside on the performance of gatekeepers?
Yes, I have.
And?
They're very happy with what's happened in the Business Improvement District.
Of course.
The service has been there.
And that's an important, I forgot to mention that. So in Oceanside, it's run through a bid, what's known as the Business Improvement District. We don't have a Business Improvement District in San Clemente, but it's fully funded by the city. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's my understanding that the city, the city pays a higher membership fee to the BID to help offset the cost of the security.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have, you want to?
No, go ahead.
You're Wyatt Kramer? And what is your name, sir?
My name is Grant Norman.
I'm sorry.
Grant Norman.
Brent?
Grant.
Brent.
Thank you, LSS.
Grant Norman. The, prior to October 22, when you started in Oceanside, what was your, was your company in existence prior to that?
Yes, though I primarily worked with the county of Riverside. I was working strongly with the county of Riverside in operations of Project Roomkey locations. Project Roomkey.
What is that?
Project Roomkey was an initiative instituted locally by the federal government basically to, during COVID, it was a way to get people who were seeking shelter and rehabilitation, kind of like a middle grounds, coming in from homelessness to stay in hotels that the county would pay for through this program. And they would stay in these hotels and we would kind of make sure that the rules are being followed because they wanted to.
That was your job prior to October?
Yeah, well, and still is. I still contract with the county for these programs, yeah.
Okay, okay. Is your company, I Googled you to try to find out information about the company.
Yeah.
Hemet kept coming up and people responded. Is that the same company?
It's not the same company, no.
Is it related?
Slightly. So Hemet Gatekeepers was my father's company. This, what, he was mostly focused strictly in the valley. He was very small and we wanted to do something bigger outside of Hemet. And he simply didn't have the time or the resources to work on that, so I was the one who picked up the mantle in order to work with the county outside of the Hemet area.
Okay, so right now, your only contract, governmental contract is with this company, with this corporation, is the city of Oceanside?
And with Riverside, Riverside, yeah.
Riverside County or city?
Riverside County.
And what kind of insurance do you have for liability?
Oh, we have this $2 million policy. We also take out additional, like, additional security insurance that is not common in the industry. We take out assault and battery just in case someone does attack one of our guards. We do take that very seriously and most companies will not take that because they ask security companies not to engage with people. Because we have a very personal way of running the business where we get out and talk to people, we do realize that in any scenario, no matter what our intentions, there are risks, and we make sure that our guards are covered should that happen.
Has your company had any lawsuits?
My company, no.
Had the other, the other related company that your dad had?
Not that I am currently aware of.
Does your, do your officers or your employees issue citations, code violation citations?
In Oceanside, they do not.
Okay. How frequently do your people have to interact with the sheriff's department? Is it sheriff or?
The police.
Local police department in Oceanside?
Yeah, so the local police department, I would say, it was more at the beginning. You know, first time you come into a city, you have more reliance on that, but soon, once, once a lot of the regulars realized kind of how, you know, the program was working, we try to keep police interaction to a minimum, honestly, because we understand that the police's resources and time are very valuable and they have a lot of things they want to be doing other than just responding to these type of things. So we've developed methods that we've found very, very effective for getting the goal done is making the area safe that doesn't have to constantly be relying on the police. Now, of course, in legal matters, if there's a crime being committed, obviously, we do need to get the police involved.
How frequently do you have that kind of contact?
Daily now, Wyatt, what would you say?
Or police?
Yeah. Yeah.
Couple times a week, maybe.
Okay, a couple times a week, for those who didn't hear.
Have your, have your employees been assaulted physically on the job?
Hundred, yes.
How frequently does that occur?
Physical assault?
Monthly.
Monthly.
Once a month, roughly? Monthly being once a month?
Yeah, currently, yeah.
What is your experience in Oceanside with motorhomes, people that are, have their code violations relating to?
So we don't.
Excessive parking?
Yeah, so in the area that we have assigned to us, motorhomes hasn't really been a big issue, just because it's not, it's not really that.
Not a big issue in Oceanside?
Not where we're contracted. I realize that it's a bigger issue other places when you get more into the neighborhoods, but we're strictly downtown.
It's a significant issue here in San Clemente. What are your thoughts on how to address that issue?
That would be something maybe, you know, in the future, if we were to go into the ability to offer citations, that would be something we could transition into. At the beginning, obviously, you know, it's one of those things that we, in Oceanside Harbor, we do have that current issue happening, where they have a lot of excessive parking in places where they're not supposed to be. We have our guards do wellness checks to make sure that people are okay, make sure that they're, you know, see if there's anything they need, see if there's anything, you know, that's preventing them from going somewhere where they are allowed to park, because they're not allowed to park there. We check up on them rather regularly to make sure that they're doing okay, and, you know, should the city decide to move forward with the ability to offer citations, that's not something I would shy away from.
Are any of your guards armed?
No. They carry less than lethals on them. We allow them to, pepper spray and.
Pepper spray, knife sticks?
And a taser. We don't, we don't allow batons.
Just pepper spray?
Just pepper spray, pepper spray and tasers.
Any canine involvement?
No.
What is, in the contract, there's a reference to heat maps. What, how does?
So heat maps are kind of, yeah, that's one of the things we do through our software, and that shows kind of, you know, it gives you guys a good idea of where activity is, and this will again be used to kind of map out, like, look, this is how we see things happening at this point, these are the hotspots, these are the key areas that we have to work on, and over time, you'll begin to see the heat maps change.
So is the heat map thermal imaging, or is that just a?
Yeah, it's just the term.
Where the activities?
Yeah, it's basically, yeah, these are, you know, this is the red zone, this is the green zone, this is the yellow zone, yeah.
I got you, thank you. Last question, you mentioned technology, software, you've mentioned several times before, record keeping. Is there any unique software behind, besides just detailed record keeping of your interaction with people?
No, we do have a proprietary contract with a company called Odin Software. Odin Software normally only contracts with police units, but because of the type of work we're doing and the distinction of the type of company we are, they've opted to contract in with us to build this database. It's a very, very advanced technology, highly secure, and we really are pretty much the only ones using it, because normally it's law enforcement. Fontana Police uses this, a lot of other police districts use this, but yeah.
And the corporation, are you the sole owner of the corporation?
I'm not.
What percentage of the stock do you own, and who else is part owner of the company?
I own 50% of the stock, the other 50% is owned by my partner, Alex Feiborg.
Is your partner currently engaged in a security services?
The security aspect, no. My partner is more concerned with the governmental side of it, the taxes, all of the, you know, all of the Ts crossed, Is dotted, everything like that. He's in charge of all the technicalities, I'm in charge of operations.
Have you ever had any police background or security background personally?
Security background, yes. Yeah, I worked for my father's company for years, since 2017.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Meyer.
You mentioned that when, when you have interactions with, with people in the areas, that one of the things you do is you offer services to them. Would you speak to what services are offered?
So, yeah, we'll usually assess if there's someone wanting a state of mind to have that conversation in the first place, right? If there's someone who just finds around, obviously, if someone's in the middle of committing a crime, that's not the first question we ask, is what services they would like, but should they be, you know, just around without anything going on, we say, hey, you know, where are you from? We try to begin with a conversation. That's kind of the idea, is we're not going there and just yelling at people, saying, hey, who are you? What's your name? Where are you from? What do you got going on? You know, just so you know, you know, you can't be camping out inside of here, but, you know, are you looking to get off the streets? Are you looking to get clean? Are you looking to whatever, right? Whatever it is that they're looking for, we try to begin to facilitate that conversation with them, so we can begin putting them in places that can help them. Now, we've recently struck up a, I guess, an agreement with San Diego Rescue Mission in Oceanside, and we're working alongside them, where that's what we're going to be doing, is when we find people on the area that we're patrolling, and they say, hey, look, man, you know, kind of some of the situations are brought up here before, like, you know, I found myself suddenly homeless, I found myself not knowing what to do, I'm living out of my car. We can immediately put them in contact with them, and the city has actually allocated funds to this contract to transport people to, all times of day and night, to get to the new place that they're opening, the 50 beds. But until then, we have another place we're able to bring people to. But, yeah, we do want to offer people some sort of solution, you know, that they can receive help, you know, in that moment, should they want it. Unfortunately, in my professional experience, a lot of people have denied help, and that's one of the things we like to keep a record of, too, is we like to know who is looking for help and who chooses not to receive help when it's offered.
So because there is services available there, you are able to enforce, or, yeah, say to them, hey, we want you to get this help, if there's not help, then what do you do?
So if there's not help, if a person, the issue we deal with, again, is obviously safety and crime, right? We don't, we don't view homelessness as a criminal activity, because it's not, you know, it's not, we're not saying it's illegal to be homeless, we're not saying anything of that nature. If someone is sitting out somewhere, you know, outside of business after hours, we'll say, hey, listen, man, do you have somewhere to go? If they say no, we say, okay, we have a couple options for you. However, one of the options, unfortunately, is not to be here, because there's certain laws in place, you can't be here at this moment, you know, you can come back during business hours, but if you need somewhere to go, there are people we can put you in contact with who can give you somewhere to stay. Now, it's easier with San Diego Rescue Mission, because their bar of entry is much lower. A lot of the other places, say we run across somebody at 3:00 AM in the nighttime, we're not going to have a lot of options of what to do then, unfortunately. There are some programs where they'll do vouchers, you know, for hotels locally, but those, you know, that's based on city resources as well. Excuse me. Primarily, yeah, we're just, in those situations, our main goal is to enforce these city ordinances, you know, and we say, hey, look, you know, we can give you a number of someone to contact tomorrow morning at 8:00, you know, if nothing open right now, we can meet you back here. However, you know, we just can't have you camping out in front of the doorstep, because we don't allow anyone to.
Next question, your funding, how does Oceanside fund your program?
So we're funded through the P-Bid. The P-Bid has its own money through that it raises, but the bulk of the funds come from the city, from their Measure X. The Measure X funds are used to substitute what the P-Bid cannot cover into the contract.
So the Measure X, this was a proposition in Oceanside that the?
Yeah, and including public safety is one of the, one of the items listed on that measure, so.
Okay. Another question, does the City of Oceanside have access to the body cams that are being used?
Should they request it? Yes, and we give them access to the data that we collect through our proprietary software as well.
You mentioned pepper spray in this, do you have a roundabout idea how often pepper spray is used in these situations?
Once.
Once ever.
Six months.
Once in six months, okay. Great.
We, you know, a lot of times when people see guards carrying these things, they have a certain negative image of these, you know, they're just itching to use this stuff, but we really, really strongly discourage any sort of physical altercation at any time. That's not our intent, these things are simply used for self-defense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. In the interest of moving on, I will not ask any questions here, but, and I'll let you step down there. But, thank you. But, yeah, do we, do we have a motion to take a brief break, just to kind of reset? Okay. Do you have a second? Five-minute break? Okay, second is no block. We will see you back, let's just say, 9:05. Who needs a break?
All right, let's get going. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for getting back in your seats here. We're going to get started here. Thanks for indulging us in that brief break. So we'll get started with public comments on this. Just want to clarify again that please keep your comments to this item, which again is narrowly just this contract with Gatekeepers on security services. Please, again, focus your comments just on that item if you would. That'll help things run smoother, and that's what the rules are, right? It's to comment on the item before us. City Clerk, how many comments do we have?
Twenty-six cards.
Twenty-six, okay. All right, let's see who our first three are.
Okay, I'll call the speakers three at a time, and then if you could please repeat your name when you get to the podium, that would be great. Begin with Rick Lefler, Lisa Adone, and Cord Bauer.
And this is specially for Rick. Please obey the three-minute mark, okay? Let's not go over here. Thanks.
Good evening, Council. You know, the only time I ever speak up here is about public safety, because it's basically the only thing that I know anything about. I just figured it out, and I just turned 70 not too long ago, and I still have four more years to go before I wouldn't have spent employed by law enforcement for half my life. That's going to depress Captain Christian back there. He's going, "Oh, my God, I can't believe it." That's going to happen, and I hope it doesn't. So anyway, I got in early on this. I actually went down, I was, I heard about the Gatekeepers being in Oceanside, and I was skeptical, so what did I do? In December, I went down there and did a little field trip with them. I walked the beat with them. I met Wyatt, I met Grant, and as we started the walk and I saw what the situation they had down there, I was still skeptical until I saw them actually start to engage people. It was incredible. It was, first of all, they're visible, which detours a lot when you see these guys down there with their cars. But the other part is their intervention, not confrontation. And I wish I would have had some of the tools that I did when I was a cop. It would have made my life a lot easier seeing how they actually handled situations. As we walked around the business district, every business owner knew Wyatt. You know, they knew him. Hi, how's it going? They waved. He nodded back. They walked the beat downtown. The business owners, we don't have the opportunity to do that in San Clemente. Our sheriffs are busy. They don't necessarily have time to walk the beat and get to know, know the business owners and have them know them. It's one of the primary functions of community-oriented policing, and they engage in that. It was, it was very surprising, and I started to come over to them. They could do the same thing in Del Mar. I don't know if they mentioned it, but actually, there's a plan to give the shop owners in Del Mar or anybody who wants one their phone number to their supervisor who's on duty. And say you have somebody standing outside of business yelling at the moon and kind of detracting from business, if you call the sheriffs, they're going to say that's the First Amendment. If they're not attacking you or they're just being a general nuisance, they might be able to come. It's going to be a long time. The Gatekeepers will respond and assist in those situations. They also, the thing about the tourists, I'm glad you brought that up, and what a great idea that they can be downtown and actually interact with the tourists we have, answer questions, be interactive with them when they're not busy doing something else, which will probably, they will have the time if we have four of them. It's also the great timing right now. We know as we get towards the summer, it gets busier and busier and busier, and if we got them through the middle of May through the middle of July, they'd be here the beginning of summer and all the way into Fourth of July. And I want to, this is not about the police department not being able to do the job. I mean, we could, but if we had four more cars of deputies, as soon as they got called away to a more important call, they would be gone. They can't just stay at North Beach. And these guys will have a chance to work with the park rangers. Park rangers can do enforcement if they're standing by with them. It's just, and if it's not this, what is it? This is the last thing, this is our last chance. So let's give it a try. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Lisa Adone, for the record, although my grandpa in heaven would love that you called me Adoney, because that's the Italian pronunciation in there, Italian immigrants. In any case, I'm here in support of the proposal. Gatekeepers will fill a gap. It's an unmet need currently that exists in the city of San Clemente because OCSD can't possibly be everything, everywhere, all at once. Not casting any dispersions on OCSD, I think our deputies are terrific, but they're limited by their capacity to do 20 things all at once. So I truly believe that Gatekeepers will assist in maintaining public safety and security, and that's sorely needed in the city right now. And I encourage you to say yes to this trial. It's a very short period of time. We can look at the metrics. We can say, "This worked, this didn't work." It's not a forever thing. When we take a look at our park rangers, we don't have 24-hour coverage right now. We had some things happen down at North Beach over a recent holiday weekend, and when we called, we got the, well, it's a holiday, there's no one on duty right now. Well, the urgent matter was occurring while someone was away for the holiday weekend. So that's difficult. We need 24-hour coverage on a routine basis, and this will, again, be that bridge for us. So I urge you to say yes to this trial. It's not a long-term project, it's a short-term trial. Please, please vote yes to take a look at this, to give it a test run, and help ensure the safety and security of San Clemente. Thank you.
I think a lot of people in the room right now will say that after the Boise decision that San Clemente was a mess, and we didn't know where we were going to go and what we were going to do. And North Beach was the flashpoint, and it was made that way on purpose. The people who wanted a shelter had feedings down there, and they encouraged the transients to camp at the beach. And we know this because of the few of the transients, they told us that. I remember being very nervous one day when one woman talked to a transient in a blue baseball cap. I was nervous because the rumor was that he had a major role in the murder of another transient in South San Clemente. When I later told this woman the rumor, she said, "Don't worry, I know how to deal with these people." She didn't say, "I worry about the children playing right over there and the potential for drugs and needles." She didn't say, "I worry about the moms pushing their carts past these places and these guys, again, howling at the moon as other people have said." We need to get back to the principles of why we're doing this. It's for the safety of our town, it's for the safety of our kids, it's for quality of life issues. Those are the main goals, and anything that hurts those goals should not be done. The problem now is the same problem that it was then, even back to Lanterman-Petrus. California's laws are broken, and they're not going to be fixed anytime soon. There is no long-term solution that we can be made that will work with these broken rules. Chris Meggason, he has Solutions for Change down in Oceanside, or in Vista, he's had a phenomenal success rate. He does not take government funds. He doesn't take the government funds because there are strings attached, and when there are strings attached, what he does does not work. That's what I'm talking about. San Clemente, we still have the same issues, and there's an old saying that says, "Perfect is the enemy of good," and perfect is not attainable because of these California current laws. The city council needs to reframe what we think is perfect, and what I think we need to say is perfect is safety and security and quality of life. And I was really happy when I heard Grant talk about safety first, okay? And I think that's what we need to focus on as well. Thank you.
Next three speakers, Ed Questin, Brad Malamud, and Jennifer Massey.
Just a reminder to all the speakers, we're focusing on this item here, not homelessness. This is not about homelessness. It's about enforcing our code violations and law violations, public safety.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council, city, and staff, and Honorable Mayor. My name is Ed Questin. I have been a resident of San Clemente for 40 years. I've had the privilege previously of serving on the Planning Commission for 11 years. Before I begin my specific presentation, I wish to acknowledge the sentiments manifested in the motto prominently displayed here in the chambers, "In God We Trust." In the spirit of that motto, I would like to refer to the Holy Scripture relative to the requirement of kindness and charity, something that we should keep in mind during these deliberations. To wit, "If there be among you a poor man of one of thy brethren within any of thy gates, and in thy land which the Lord thy God giveth thee, you should not harden your heart, nor shut thine hand from the poor brother." It's Deuteronomy, Chapter 15, verse 7. Okay. With that in mind, I state the following. Per psychological, psychology today, the estimated 20% to 25% of the U.S. homeless population suffers from severe mental illness compared to 6% of the general population. The concentration of mental illness, substance abuse, and poor physical health makes it difficult for them to maintain employment or regular residency. I would suggest the following then relative to what Grant has proposed, because essentially what Grant has proposed is clearing the area. That's fine to clear the area, but we've got, as a community, we've got to be responsible to give them an assistance. Essentially, I would say a field staff of social psychologists work with them as part of our payment for these services. A temporary institutional facility somewhere in the city so that when, if the psychologists encounter someone, or Grant encounters someone, at 3:00 in the morning, there's an opportunity to basically institutionalize them temporarily until they can be relocated to a proper The, to balance the public health, safety, and welfare as well as compliance with the current public nuisance statutes, the city might approve a new policy outlining the specific locations and times of day a homeless person should sleep on a public property. The Boise decision does not explicitly ban the making of such restrictions. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
I want to follow you.
It's showtime, baby.
I know. You know?
Hi, Council. I want to repeat what I said earlier. This thing is crammed down in five days. If you listen, I know it's going to pass tonight, and I'm just telling you that this is just a bad decision. And that's not that this person or this company can't do the job they're saying, but it is a homeless issue, Chris, and not one matrix on this thing is homelessness. In other words, if they move them from one place to another in the city, yeah, it'll be better in North Beach, but how about the places that people move to? They're going to relocate if you hassle them. Great, so you can clear them out. Did you guys do any math? My calculation is that this is 2,680 hours per month of people. If there's 100 homeless in North Beach, and I don't think there's that many, that's 26.8 hours per month per employee that's out there. Really? Really? At what cost? 20,000, 10,000? And how are you going to fund this? You're going to take our reserves that have been depleted by, I think it's 20 million over the last 10, seven years, and you're going to spend $1,008,000 a year? But more importantly, you know, I understand from talking to everybody that they think that this is an alternative, this is a solution, this is an idea, but what other ideas were explored? You got a new city manager, and you haven't given him five days to look at alternatives. And this is a very expensive alternative. Given the numbers I told you, cut it down to two people at a time, and he even said, "Well, probably after a month or two, we won't need four." You don't have $1,006,000 in your budget, and if you did, you could hire six full-time sheriff instead. And don't tell me you can't, six positions, not six 24-hour shifts. But that could, you could assign those, and no matter what they say, you could assign them to North Beach. I know in an emergency or whatever, they have to leave. But if it's 26.8 hours per person, you know, you don't need that kind of time. This is what's wrong with code enforcement and the Rangers now. You have to make a finding tonight if you hire these people, that didn't work, so let's get rid of them if they can't do their job. Or let the city manager look at the alternatives, and there's no RFP. When do you give out contracts in five days without an RFP to a company that's only done one city? One city, and they say, "Oh, I worked at the county, and now I work for the county," but he hasn't told us exactly what he does there. The matrix, though, is not about homeless. This isn't a homeless solution, so what is it? Do we have a lot of graffiti in that part of town? Do we have a lot of crime? Yes, I wouldn't want to lose, and if we do, then let the sheriff do their job and arrest them. Let the sheriffs deal with that problem, and if you hire six more, this is maybe...
Please keep the comments down in the background.
You can hear me through the microphone, and they're allowed to publicly speak. But anyway, I just suggest table this tonight. Discuss it, table it, consider it. Let the, give the city manager at least two months, maybe three, since they won't start for four months anyways, because they don't have a trained staff to take this city. They're going to train them. So delay it. Let the city manager give you advice. You hired him, you pay him a lot of money. Let him give his input. Let him see what the alternatives are. Thank you.
You've all heard me speak before, so you know, my name is Jennifer Massey. They call me Jiffy, and I've been here for 42 years, and I love San Clemente, and I really want to acknowledge our respect and gratitude for all of your service, you five councilmen up there. Well, of course, some of us girls looking forward to getting a girl or two up there. That'll be coming up soon. Anyway, continue doing your wonderful job. Now, I'm going to make a couple of recommendations here.
Jiffy, speak into the mic, please.
Oh, sorry. Gatekeepers, when speaking of guards, remind me of police states that scare people. We're not dealing with criminals, we're dealing with human beings, human beings in distress. San Clemente is not and never has been Oceanside and never will be. Please do not spend my tax dollars on a police state. Regarding council plans to contract a private security company to help address illegal activity concerning the city's homeless population, what in heaven's name do you city council members be by, quote, "illegal activity"? These people need our help, not persecution and prosecution. If any, if any of you believe, and I do unto others what you have done unto me, do you think this is how your God would treat fellow human beings in desperate need? Instead of spending taxpayer monies on a private security company, I ask you to spend our monies on a shelter. Let's walk in their shoes and establish a city committee to interview one a week and publish the interview of how they became homeless and what help they need, and have said interview published in the San Clemente Times. Let's practice loving, caring, sharing with those less fortunate that we in this room here today are. Let's make the reputation of San Clemente one we can be proud of, not just for Casa Romantica, the Cabrillo Playhouse, and our schools, but more importantly, for our humanity. So city council members, will you establish a committee to search for a shelter location with easy-to-get-to public transportation that can offer cars with free transportation for our homeless? Those who are homeless and suffer from addictions can be taken to places other than our shelter where they can be attended to and no longer able to camp on our sidewalks, et cetera. City council members, we call on you to do what's right, and I'm sure we can rally sufficient support behind you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, next three speakers.
Next three speakers, Kathy Dominakini, Julie Crandall, and Mike Dobbles.
Hi, Kathy Dominakini. I'm here tonight because I feel like there's some things I might have missed from the last couple meetings. Originally, I believe city staff was asked to set aside $50,000 and look at solutions in which we could help individuals during the inclement weather. And then at the last meeting, city council members passed the okay to hire, look into hiring a private security company, which I thought originally was from 12:00 o'clock to 4:00 a.m. So I was a little surprised to read this resolution that was 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So somehow, maybe I missed that. We jumped from four hours a day to 24 hours a day. And so I just would like some explanation on that. And also, something I didn't understand or don't understand is where the zone is that this potential security company will be monitoring. That was something that's not clear to me. So does that mean all of San Clemente, North Beach, the Bull Area, the Pier? I don't really know. It wasn't clear, and nobody asked that question earlier. So it's a lot of money, $131,000 a month is a lot of money. I think we all can agree on that. And I think we all can agree that we want safety in our community, but I feel like there's been a disconnect because originally, we brought this up to assist individuals during inclement weather, and now we've gone to a full enforcement. So I mean, I think we're mixing some of our concerns here. We have people that are creating problems on the street and on the beaches. We have teens, 20-year-olds, we have all kinds of people doing that. And we also, so we want safety, but we also have those that are in shelter, which I believe was the first task that the council gave to city staff. And I too agree, I'm not, I agree that our staff needs more time. We haven't gotten other bids. Let's do some comparison. That's what you do. I mean, I hired a security company before for something that we did, and I talked to about four companies to find the, and the range was vast, so nothing against this company right here. But I do think we need to take a little more time and look at what we're trying to achieve here. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm Julie Crandall with Disability Rights California. I have a letter here that was emailed to you, and I can give you hard copies as well. On behalf of Jeff Barrow and Mardina Manning, Disability Rights California, strongly opposes the proposed plan to use city funds to engage in a security agency to escalate enforcement actions against unhoused people in the city of San Clemente. Targeted enforcement will have a negative impact on the lives of unhoused people, many of whom are disabled and will perpetuate ongoing injustice. This proposal intends to hurt San Clemente's unhoused people and should subject them to targeted discrimination. At the March 15th and March 21st meetings, council member Jean James made it abundantly clear that the gatekeeper's security will get tough on homeless people in an effort to drive them out of town, using labels like vagrants, criminals, and addicts to describe unhoused persons. It incites fear and should be condemned as discriminatory and reprehensible by the city council. This form of harassment against vulnerable unhoused residents leads to acts of vigilantism which harms the entire community. Moreover, the city cannot contract away its obligations to comply with protecting the civil rights of its residents regardless of their housing status. Rather than criminalizing homelessness and dispersing unhoused residents, the city should utilize its resources to assist unhoused people in finding affordable, accessible homes. The city can also use the funds intended for private security to support programs that safeguard the health, well-being, and dignity of unhoused people, recognizing that unhoused individuals... Recognizing that unhoused individuals should be protected from deliberate attacks can help to encourage long-term solutions to solve homelessness. For the residents of a city who do not have housing, the city should make it a priority to provide housing that is both easily accessible and affordable, as provide supportive services including case management, healthcare, and employment assistance. This strategy, known as Housing First, has been shown to be effective in reducing homelessness and improving outcomes for individuals experiencing homelessness and its community. The city can end homelessness by shifting its focus from discriminatory actions to ones that will achieve collaboration and coordination with unhoused people and service agencies that have critical tools to address homelessness. In conclusion, we urge the city of city council to reject the private security firm proposal to solve homelessness in San Clemente and instead adopt solutions that have proven successful for our community. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Mike Dobbles. This is, I'm a resident of San Clemente for 13 years. I've never been to a city council meeting before. I've never spoken at a city council meeting before. I'm here for the first time because I've experienced a number of dangerous incidents, and I was very excited to see that they were considering having a security guard. Just in the last month and a half, I had an incident where I was with my, I live in North Beach. I like to walk down to Del Mar. In the last month and a half, I had, I was walking with my parents and my two kids, ran across some individual who's having some sort of mental health, maybe drug kind of thing. He had a bottle in his hand, he was holding like this. He started screaming at us, using the N-word, talking about dragging black people behind a truck and all kinds of stuff. I tried to cross the street. I got away. He caught back up. It was very, very concerning. Yesterday, that was like a month and a half ago, or that was last month, yesterday, and I didn't see that guy before. Yesterday, I was going along El Camino Real. There was another guy having some sort of incident. This is a kind of regular black guy with a long, bushy beard. He was, now, he wasn't screaming at me like the other one was. He was screaming at cars passing. I got past that. I go down to the coffee shop down on, it's a little bit past Del Mar. Then there's one guy who's also regular, kind of shaves his head on the side. He's in the middle of the street, like shouting at passing cars. That's El Camino Real, that's fairly busy street. And he's shouting at them and like then doing some kind of weird, like he's a hitchhiker in the middle of the street, and then, you know, so I'm worried about that. So I'm like thrilled that you guys are considering a security guard. Absolutely, positively, do not wait. The situation is very bad. I'm like having to reroute, I'm walking with my family to get away from all this stuff. And I just, I can't, it's like terrible. It's terrible. So I don't know about all the other things we're talking about, but it's actually, things are happening all the time in this area. That's it.
Next three speakers, Darrell McFann, Kathy S. Fahani, and Donna Vedrine. Darrell McFann, followed by Kathy S. Fahani, followed by Donna Vedrine.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, mayor. The subject was, do we consider a security company? And where do we start when people say, "We need more time, let's not rush into things"? This isn't rushing into things. This is meeting these gentlemen and asking specific questions. I think that you guys, I applaud every one of you for asking questions and making something happen. Look, if it doesn't work out in two months, what's lost? I have a suggestion. Take the funds that you're going to have to pay these people from, from the money you saved from not having an Ocean Festival this year, and apply it to that. Because this is more important than an Ocean Festival, as far as I'm concerned, but everybody wanted off with the heads because that didn't happen. I fully endorse trying something and then saying, "Well, that didn't work," or going, "Wow, okay, this is a step in the great direction." So I'm just here to endorse this only because a lot of people are saying, "Oh, we've never had to have one before. We need something now." And it gives our sheriffs a break to actually deal with criminals that are very dangerous and not always trying to be a mediator or, you know, saying, "Look, we can't do much. Our hands are tied in this." We all know that. And they do a great job at what they do, but they can't be more clear. There's a lot of things we can't deal with, and we know why. But we can with these folks, and they seem like really nice. I went up and chatted with all of them, and it was, "Yes, sir, yes, sir." And they're wonderful. If they were that kind of diplomatic on the streets and being friendly with people, that's like hiring a greeter from Laguna on every street corner. So I totally endorse it. And I just want to say, somebody mentioned how wonderful Oceanside has become, and, you know, they have a shelter and da-da-da. She didn't say they also have the gatekeepers there. Okay? That was left out. So I want to bring that back to your attention again, that the only thing we can lose from this is some dollars. The only thing we can gain from this is a healthy city. And that is what we do. When we buy a new car, we don't get to take it home for a month and test drive it and just make sure we're totally in love with it. You bought the car, if you don't like it, you sell it and you try something else. I'm saying, let's move forward with trying something else. And I applaud you guys for trying to do something rather than just saying, "Oh, we're working on something, we're working on something." But to hold public forums and, there it is.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Kathy S. Fahani. There are many things to be said in opposition to this proposal. In three minutes, I'll try to cover a number of points. Point number one, this is a manufactured emergency. Councilmember Jean James is trying to force, council, I need more time. Councilmember Jean James is trying to force the council's hand by claims that North Beach is in crisis, with residents and visitors cowering in fear of the homeless people who are there.
Please keep the comments down.
This is a false narrative. I live in North Beach. We live right up the street from the Ole Henson Beach House. We go to the beach trail every day. We go to the beach every day. And guess what? The parking lot is full, the beach trail is full, people are enjoying the beach there. The high school track team runs the trail, families walk the trail with their children, old people walk chatting. This is not an atmosphere of fear. So there is no emergency that justifies this rush to enter an expensive contract for private security to police North Beach. Which brings me to point number two. The proposed contract is a huge waste of taxpayer funds. Tell me, why would residents from Cypress Shores, or Talega, or any other neighborhood of part of town want to spend $130,400 per month, over $1.5 million a year, to have security guards in cars patrol North Beach 24/7? It seems that the crimes that the security guards would be asked to prevent are smoking, drinking, and dogs on the beach. Well, I can't imagine that smoking on the beach would justify $1.5 million a year. Drinking on the beach? Well, I've seen lots of just regular people having a beer at sunset on the beach. I guess you can spend $1.5 million to stop people doing that, if you want. And dogs on the beach? It's lots of expensive dogs from the neighborhood who are running free on the beach. If you want to enforce laws against that, great, but really bringing a private security firm to do this? It doesn't make any economic sense. And point number three, the city will get sued, which will lead into the waste of more taxpayer funds. On March 14th, Mr. James told the North Beach community that the city can solve homelessness within 90 days by increasing enforcement actions against homeless people to drive them out of town. It appears this proposal is the first ominous step-
Thank you, thank you very much. Time is up. Sorry.
You know, I must say that you were not timing the other speakers. I was watching on my clock. And I would like an extra 20 seconds because I was interrupted and other people got it.
I'm sorry, the time is up.
Wow.
Next speaker.
Donna Vedrine. Following Donna Vedrine is Dennis Camp, Suzanne Ruiz, and Reverend Julie Patton.
Where are the homeless going to go? Back to South San Clemente or into our neighborhoods to avoid the private security patrol cars of gatekeepers for two months? This is not the right answer nor the right time. Under the leadership of our new city manager, the problems at North Beach are being managed more effectively with measurable outcomes. North Beach is presenting more nicely to tourists, and the North Beach residents' concerns are being addressed. Our OCSD is making frequent patrols 24/7 to ensure public safety and enforce unlawful activity. We have a special unit within the OCSD with training and connections to our city to work on reducing our unhoused population. Under the leadership of Andy Hall, our city manager, we are training and adding park rangers, code-compliant staff, dedicated to enforcing San Clemente's ordinances and laws. Our two outreach service workers are working every day to connect San Clemente unhoused with family and resources to relocate homeless into programs and housing. We are making progress. Go and spend some time at North Beach and our other San Clemente beaches. I say invest that $139,000 per month in our city staff to bring real solutions to San Clemente. Our city manager has the leadership skills to listen to the concerns and address the problems, to bring resolution to the current homeless problems that have not been addressed responsibly in our city under the previous full-time city managers. Andy Hall's style is bringing people together, working on real problems with real solutions. 10% of life is what happens. The other 90% is how we react. I admire people who respond calmly and thoughtfully to troublesome and challenging situations. There is no urgency to advance this resolution and contract tonight. Let's work together with our OCSD to enforce our laws and ordinances, park rangers, code compliance, and our own city staff. Do not go down this road of vigilantism, throwing a lot of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars, at the problem of homelessness in San Clemente without a comprehensive plan, with clearly defined goals and measurable outcomes. This is the time to respond calmly and thoughtfully with responsible action. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Laura?
Dennis Camp.
I don't know if the yellow light is turning on. Is there another setting?
It's not turning on.
Okay. Okay, it's, hold on just a second. Is there another setting where we can get the yellow light turning on?
Yeah, it goes right to red.
Yeah.
That's, okay.
I'll have to get it back in to it.
Okay.
It should be good.
Yeah, thank you, sir, for your comments.
Yeah, it's been a fun time. It's an emotional meeting tonight. I'm going to take another path. I'm going to look at this contractually. The resolution talks about illegal activity, and it states that our police and city service doesn't have the resources to handle the problem. That's what the resolution says. Then I look at the proposal. The proposal doesn't reference any of the solutions. The proposal talks about a duplication of the very work our existing city outreach people do. They're going to report, create heat maps, and bring back to the city where our homeless is, where our criminals are, and I let the city determine what to do with them. Now, I would really like to have this problem solved, but I don't think this proposal, the way it's written, and I was taught if it's not in the four corners of the paper, it's not part of the deal. So I would ask city council to ask the city manager to go back to the organization, talk to Mr. Norman, and recreate that proposal to put in all the good things that he said that he would do, and put that in the contract and then let us have another conversation. Because I don't believe that the contract, the proposal, the resolution, and everything we've heard tonight jives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just a reminder that the item is about the contract for the private security services, not about homelessness or anything else. All right, thank you.
Suzanne Ruiz, followed by Reverend Julie Patton, followed by Rick Price.
How many more do we have left?
Rick Price, I don't know if the other two are here.
I'm right here. But I'm not Suzanne, I'm Pastor Julie Patton. So I was waiting for the person in front of me.
Okay, I didn't see anybody get up here, so I just came up. So I'll wait for my turn. Thank you. Who's up next, city clerk?
Suzanne Ruiz.
Okay. Suzanne Ruiz, okay.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Reverend Julie Patton.
Good evening, council members. I'm Reverend Julie Patton from Christ Lutheran Church in San Clemente, AKA Donna Vedrine's church. Every Sunday, I start our services with a simple but powerful statement. Christ Lutheran Church welcomes all who are seeking God's love and grace. We welcome all because God welcomes all, regardless of race or culture, sexual orientation, gender identity, or relationship status. We welcome all without regard to addictions, physical or mental health, socioeconomic circumstances, or anything that too often divides us. We are committed to worshiping God, nurturing and caring for one another, and equipping our members for witness and service in the world. We are called to help those who are marginalized by having compassion and caring for others. We are called to love all of our neighbors, regardless of whether they have an address or a roof over their heads. Please reconsider using this as a punitive action toward already marginalized people struggling to live each and every day in our community. Thank you.
Rick Price, followed by Michelle Alexander, followed by Sarah Martin.
Thanks. Appreciate the time, and I sincerely appreciate every council member here. I realize it's not an easy job, so I do appreciate the fact that you guys are here at 10 o'clock on a Monday night. I'm sure you have other places you'd rather be. Thank you also for coming down to the North Beach Community Association meeting that we had a few weeks ago. I've lived in North Beach for 12 years, and I have a small family with three small kids. And 10 years ago, we used to go to North Beach all the time, on Saturday, hang out at the beach. It was great. About seven or eight years ago, the sand washed away, and we still came back, despite the fact that it's not the nicest beach in San Clemente. We still came to North Beach. About five years ago, we just stopped going because it's just not safe. And it's a cleanliness and a safety issue. And so now, we get in the car and we drive to Linda Lane. I could walk to North Beach, but we don't do that anymore because it's not safe. And I think that's just unfortunate, that it has to be that way. I have emailed you all earlier this, or last week, and shared some of the stories of the things that we've had issues with, almost like safety and theft-related. I've had stuff stolen from my property as recently as like 30 days ago, and then it was three months before that. It's just- It's just, it's not safe, and it is a vagrancy issue in my opinion. I'm very supportive of this resolution for this trial contract. I don't think any of the solutions are ever going to be perfect, and I think it's a multifaceted approach that we need to take, but I appreciate the fact that we're trying something, and it's noncommittal. I'll be happy to come report back in 60 days how it is. As it stands right now, I don't, I would never take my kids down to walk in the beach at night after dark. I'll try it with my wife, maybe, in the next 60 days to see how that goes. But that would be, that would be great if we could one day have the North Beach back that we used to have, where you can feel safe walking with your kids, like at dusk. I don't, I just don't think it's too much to ask, and it's part of our, it's part of our, you know, city motto. It's safety, and that's the issue. So I'm fully supportive of giving this a shot, and a bunch of other things.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Been here 39 years, graduating class of 2000. I had like a whole spiel written, and now I'm just gonna wing it. I'm going on a 16-hour day. I work my business six days a week, and I have a consulting business. I work the seventh day a week. One thing is clear, San Clemente is one of the most caring and amazing communities. I'm really grateful that we're all here tonight, okay? We all care about the people in this town. We need help. The working families, young families, people that are working, having businesses here, if you made it through COVID and your business survived, you're still in reactionary mode, okay? I'm on the front lines on Del Mar, okay? The transient population that are committing crimes in town are not just at North Beach. I'm here because of public safety. I support the 60-day trial. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result, okay? I had to get into it with a guy that was blocking entrance to my business on February 25th. It was raining.
Please, please address us. Thank you.
I got a text from the neighboring lady who works next door to me, said there's a crazy guy, all his stuff is blocking stuff, our doors. We couldn't access our business, okay? I brought an umbrella. I'm a compassionate human being. I'm not gonna just be like, "Bro, you gotta go," because, you know, I gotta open my shop. But I have to feed my family, too. My husband graduated class of 96. He fought for our country. He's 100% disabled veteran, so I understand mental illness. I understand the compassion that we need for people on the streets. I approached the gentleman, I gave him the umbrella, I backed off 20 feet because I didn't know if he had a knife. OCSD had been called at 9:00 AM by the other business owner, okay? We're now at 10:30. Couple stopped by and asked me if I needed help, and I'm like, "No, we're good. He knows the sheriffs are on their way. He's accepted the umbrella, you know, God bless you, please, you know, please be on your way." Well, then he got belligerent. He started yelling at me, calling me a B-word and a C-word, and I'm still 20 feet away. And finally, I lost it, because I am not gonna get verbally abused by a criminal transient blocking my private property access to feed my family. I tried the compassionate approach. I do this every day. I had a guy come in Monday, trying to panhandle for me. Then, you know, another guy came in Tuesday with whiteboards. I don't know where these creepers are coming from. They're not from our town. I can't solve this problem, but we need more help, whether it's OCSD coming down Del Mar, cruising every few hours, showing their presence, or if you contract with the security company, which I'm in favor of a 60-day trial. I believe more security presence throughout San Clemente's beaches and downtown San Clemente will definitely deter criminal activity and private property abuses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sarah Martin, followed by Saul Martin, followed by Ryan Gunn.
Hi, councilman, and welcome to the new city attorney, and Andy Hall, everyone. Yeah. So this issue, we have had two thefts, and OCSD has actually followed up, and they were both transients, that they followed and caught the people. So that's a good thing. However, it's taking their resources, and they were not from our community. And we have another problem, that there are a lot of transient criminals that are coming to our community, which some of the people that are naming themselves to be advocates are targeting North Beach and the rest of the community. Mora is one of them, which today publicly on Nextdoor, she called, she said North Beach was quote-unquote ugly. She said, "It's ugly, and it's always kind of sucked." Okay? That's, Ole Hanson was formed there because it is the jewel of San Clemente. It's where the city started. And we're gonna let it turn into trash? And it's not just, not North Beach, we're talking everywhere. We need to preserve that. We can't just, and like for the Talega, for everyone, like, everyone smiled. I was just talking to someone, and they compared us to Oceanside in terms of the homeless problem. San Clemente now is getting a reputation for that. If we don't step up and do something now, it's gonna get worse. And there are people that are targeting our community. They're bringing them to our community, and we need to say no. We need to stop it. I'm all for helping people in our community that need help, 100%, let's do it, but we can't take on everybody else's problems, and it's completely irresponsible. So thank you for listening.
My name is Saul Martin, and I'm a San Clemente resident. I'm here to speak in support of Resolution 2310, and I'll explain why. So I surf, I run, I walk on North Beach regularly. I live five blocks away. When I go walk in the Dana Point Harbor, which has private security, you don't see any illegal activities going on. Almost every single time that I'm down at North Beach, I see illegal activities going on. Just yesterday morning, there was a guy passed out with a dab pen in his hand on the bench, and the table was occupied by two gentlemen who were drinking and smoking, so, smoking weed. So the other crimes that I see down there on almost daily basis is there's lots of graffiti and vandalism, there's piles of stolen bike parts, drinking, smoking, mounds of litter left over from the feedings and bedding in tents used for a few nights and then discarded, handed out by the enablers that come to our communities from other communities to attract the vagrants here at North Beach. So I know they're well-meaning citizens, but why are they attracting and handing out stuff here in my neighborhood in North Beach? Why can't they hand it out their own neighborhood, their own church, their own homes? Why come to my neighborhood and do it? Sometimes I'll call the police on these activities, and I'll wait anywhere between 30 minutes and forever for the police to show up. Oftentimes, it's low priority for them, and so they just, they don't turn out. And I believe that having a constant security presence in the neighborhood would be a big help, so I support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, or good night. My name's Ryan Gunn, and I'm a North Beach resident. Despite my last name, I'm not highly involved in security, but I am responsible for the security of my family. And for the, I've been a North Beach resident for four years, and we always go down to North Beach and spend time down there as a family. And for the first time this last Sunday, I just felt extremely uncomfortable when my boy asked me, "Let's go over on the swings, Dad." It was the first time in my time here in San Clemente where I just felt, "No, we're not going over there." So something's going the wrong direction, there's no doubt in my mind. And so I'm walking around, I can't even be at the beach down the street from my house and not feel comfortable with my family. And I don't think I've changed, I think something else is changing, that's the community. So I'm here tonight just deeply concerned, the direction things are going. I also think with this new slide that's happened and everything shut down, it's gonna get worse. Like, there's not as much foot traffic going on down there right now, and things are gonna get worse before they get better. So deeply concerned, and I support this motion. I don't think, even if it doesn't end up being a long-term contract, if we get 60 days of hard data to better understand the issues we're having, and it sounds like that's gonna happen, then we are gonna move one step forward in the right direction. And there's no silver bullet. We have, there's a lot of ideas that came out at the North Beach community, and we're gonna have to attack this from several different angles, whatever, all the issues that are there, between crimes and, you know, homelessness, all these different things. But getting a contract in place and start getting data and getting, you know, gentlemen that are involved personally with these people to better understand the problems is a step forward. And it's money well spent, in my opinion. So thank you for your time tonight, and appreciate it.
Corinne Van Dyke, followed by Bill Hopkins, followed by Herb Yanggo. Corinne Van Dyke.
Just a reminder, but to confine the comments to the item on security services, not homelessness or anything else. Thank you.
I was actually expecting to speak earlier in the meeting. I just have a couple of things to say right now, listening to the speakers and listening to gatekeepers present, is I'm hearing a lot of generalities and a lot, not many specifics. I heard about a gap between what the park rangers handle and what the sheriff's department handles, but no one really talked about exactly what that gap is. So the lack of specific, ugh, concerns me. And then I'm hearing a lot of people talk about, "Well, I feel unsafe, I feel this, I feel that." Once again, lack of specifics. And it just reminds me of my very first university course when I was an 18-year-old, and it was Economics 201. Whenever a student said something but provided no evidence for their statement, the professor would say, "And where'd you learn that? Got a phone call from heaven?" And that's what keeps going through my mind tonight, is I'm hearing lots of talk, lots of emotions, but not much data. And the last point I'm gonna make, is as I heard, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, the man from Gatekeepers speak, and he talked about the services that they would provide, it sounded more like social work than guard services. So if social services are what we need, then let's get social services at North Beach. Let's provide mental health care. We need, we need mental health care workers, we need social workers, we don't need guard services to help homeless people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Hopkins, followed by Herb Yanggo, followed by Bridget Callanan. And just a reminder to please state your name when you get to the podium. Thank you.
Bill Hopkins, how are you? I'm hearing a lot of people talk about, doesn't appear that there's real crimes here in North Beach. I've been in North Beach for about two and a half years. My wife can't walk the dogs at night because it's unsafe. Though I walked out, there was a guy with a hammer in my parking, rear parking garage. That's something to be concerned about. Wouldn't you agree? I've had my car broken into, I've had my windshield smashed twice, I've had other cars broken into our secured parking garage. I've had, I've been chased on the street. There's no way in the world I would ever go to that beach at night. So whoever's talking about things, they don't believe they exist. I don't know where they are. Maybe they're in their homes. They're not going around at night. There is a major problem with crime in North Beach, and it's getting worse. Okay? I moved here from Arizona, and I'm so disappointed at how much money we pay and how much taxes we pay in HOA to deal with a lifestyle like this. It has to be stopped because it's getting worse, and it's gonna affect our values significantly. So if you want your homes to be worth it, and you want to be able to take your children to the beach, there's no way in the world I would take my two boys who are now in college to the beach if they were seven or eight or nine years old, like those gentlemen said before. I would never do it. I've seen drugs also being sold in my alley. I've had people sleeping on my property. I couldn't get off until I had the OCSD come. There's a problem, guys, we need to take care of it.
Good evening, council members and the mayor. I'm Herb Yanggo, and I'm a North Beach resident, live on Buena Vista, and my wife's here with me tonight. She, we, she's scared to death to go down to the beach anymore. She won't go, and she can't go in the restrooms. You know, we go, we walk down to the pier, you know, when I'm with her, we walk by there, but there's criminals there. And with the other day, this is one incident, you know, we need some kind of security, and I've called the police several times. There was a guy had his pants down right next to the swing sets there by the bathroom at North Beach, and he's just standing there, and we were trying to take a walk down to the pier, and there's kids playing on the swings, and it's horrible. It's terrible. The crime, you know, I walked down there, I'm not that afraid of them as much as my wife is, but I saw them, they had a pair of big bolt cutters about this long, and then, you know, they got all these bicycles and stuff down there. They're criminals, and, you know, they're vagrants, they're not, they're homeless. It's a criminal element, and we need to do something about it. I'm kind of more for having more Orange County sheriffs in the city, or creating our own police department. A trial basis for these guys, my wife is kind of for that, I'm kind of on the fence. I kind of think we need someone that could go down there and enforce these codes and laws that they're breaking to do something here. And, you know, this is a real serious problem, and I hope we can resolve it, and, you know, maybe this trial thing would be a good thing to get some data to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bridget Callanan. I'm a long-term homeowner at North Beach, and not once in, have I, my husband and I walk to the pier from North Beach probably five times a week, and I, I don't deny what you're saying is true, but I've never seen it. I'm sorry, but, and seeing poverty of the unsheltered or people living in their cars has never caused me fear or threatened my well-being. I think a church that shares food once a month is not a big invitation to move on down and move in. I think it's a symbol of their faith and nothing more. I don't know what the statistics are regarding crime and the unsheltered, and we used to in our local reg list the sheriff's interactions with the public and when crimes are committed, but I think if that's something, if that's documentation you have, you know, it should be made public. Let us know what's actually happening. I mean, I wouldn't want to see a naked man when my children were on the swing sets either, but I think that's the job of the sheriff. And I don't know, when I hear random stories about volleyball nets being ripped or graffiti, you know, that could be teenagers for all we know. I don't like hearing these stories that are not documented and having real data. Crime needs to be policed by the police. I don't want my tax dollars used this way. And it's my understanding, on any given night in Laguna Beach or Santa Ana, there are no extra shelter beds and not enough for all the people that need them. So can't send them somewhere else, and these people, many of them have been here a long time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, next three speakers.
Michelle Brooks, followed by Toni Burns, followed by Ray Harju.
Michelle, you're up. How many more speakers?
Six more.
Okay.
Thanks, you guys, for staying late to hear us out. I know that we've heard a lot of speeches tonight, but I just want to point out that this may be a lot of money, and it may not be guaranteed. We don't know the outcome yet, but it's a start, and it's action, and in my opinion, from what I've seen, all we've been doing is talking about this for the last five years plus without any steps. To me, this is something we can do. Grant himself says most of the homeless are service-resistant, so I don't know how we can come up here and say, "Housing first works," when we just heard from somebody who, of all of us, would be the one who knows, and he's- from somebody who, of all of us, would be the one who knows, and he said they're service-resistant. To the attorney who spoke earlier, I'd love to know the city where Housing First is working. I'd also like to know how much she gets off representing the unhoused. I don't get paid to fight for my city. My friend Michelle, who spoke, who owns a boutique, doesn't get paid for the lost revenue because people don't want to step over sleeping bags and dirty needles and feces to get into her shop. So what are the solutions that are working? This is something we can do. We can try. The fact that one speaker said this is a manufactured crisis because she has some personal vendetta against a council member that's actually trying to do something is beyond offensive to every one of us who has been affected by this. My kids, our businesses, our safety. This isn't a partisan issue. It's a quality-of-life, public-safety issue for those of us who live here and pay taxes to live here. For all of your constituents, this matters. Council owes it to every resident in this town to read their emails and listen to these stories. Ask all of the business owners how they feel about this. Listen to what you heard from the residents in North Beach. $130,000 a month is a lot of money, yes, but think of the money lost when the tourists stop coming, when people stop spending their money because it's not enjoyable to walk our downtown. We cannot attract Park Rangers as it is. We are asking so much of our code, and more officers won't help with these issues we're experiencing from homelessness. We ask too much of all of these entities as it is. This is a quality-of-life issue. We need to see something being done about homelessness, and this is the start. Most of these homeless aren't even from San Clemente. We've heard that tonight. We need to see visible improvement. If that is done, I think the money makes sense, if we see visible improvement throughout our town. It's a month-to-month thing. If it doesn't work, we pull out. My only concern is to not just disperse the homeless around town. The business park got cleared out of RVs, and they simply moved to Calafia. So I hope what comes from this is, again, visible improvement, not people sleeping on our train platforms or in front of our shops and restaurants or under our overpasses. Please don't let us turn into LA or San Francisco. You have to know the town that you five serve, and we do not want to become LA or San Francisco. We cannot have that pushed on us. That is not your constituents, that is not our town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Toni Burns?
Wow, there's a lot. So, I came here tonight to learn about Gatekeepers. I learned a lot tonight. I like the fact that it's temporary, and it's a trial basis, and I think it's something that the city council should consider. I do have some concerns regarding the city's liability. Let's say, for some reason, he does the pepper spray, and the homeless guy falls back and hits his head on a rock. What liability does the city have? Are we looking at a potential lawsuit? Those are the things that I look at. But I came to a crime and safety meeting about six months ago, and this is before some of you city council members were here. Three of you were at that meeting. And I was sitting next to a man who lived at North Beach. His passion and his pain got to me. I don't live in North Beach, but everybody that lives at North Beach here today that spoke, my heart breaks for them. And the five of you owe it to them to consider what they're saying to you. They go to work every day to feed their families, they spend a lot of money on these homes, and they, this is their livelihood, this is everything they own is in their homes, and the safety of their children is numero uno. And I think everybody, no matter what side you're on, homeless, whatever. But what it also comes down to is, people have a choice to get help. And I know there's services available at the county level. I have a brother who is a heroin addict. He lived on the streets for nine years. And let me tell you what I learned. They have to hit rock bottom. When you go there and you feed them and give them free services, that just enables their illegal behavior. You know, it wasn't easy dealing with my brother, but he has been sober now for 25 years. But it is a choice. It is a choice. Yes, it's a disability, but you know what? We all do what we can with disabilities, what God has given us. And you know what? I walk the beach trail, and I look at these guys sometimes, like, really? Go do something about it. Get off of your, you know what? Get a job, or go to the county and get the services that are available to you. And I'll say this real quick. On a Saturday afternoon, I was walking the beach trail towards T Street at that new deli place on the beach. And people are conversing, and the place is thriving. There was a homeless man with a blanket over him, he had a 7-Eleven cup, a big goat cup, and he was peeing in it. Nobody around there saw him because there were families, little kids engaging in conversation. So I stopped this cup on the beach trail, and I asked him, "Do you see this?" And they're like, "Oh, my gosh." So I went over and talked to the owners or whoever's running that. And I told them, I said, "You had this going on, and I don't want you to lose business." So, think about that.
Ray Harju, followed by Shelley Moore, followed by Jill Watson?
Hi, I'm Ray Harju. I live in North Beach. And the problem is, is the unhoused are concentrated in North Beach. Those in North Beach, those people who play, live, and work in North Beach are paying the price in terms of safety and in terms of quality of life. The vast majority of North Beachers have stories like you've heard tonight. I've got at least a half a dozen of them, maybe a dozen of them. Most of the people that live in North Beach and work in North Beach have similar stories. We had a town council, North Beach Community Association, a couple of you guys were there. Thank you for being there. Andy, thank you for being there. And we put together a list of ideas, and they kind of broke down into two categories. One of them was, for the most part, the ideas that came from the locals were doable, relatively inexpensive, and relatively short-term. The top of the list was law enforcement, enforce the rules that we have. We had another set of ideas, such as put together funding for paying for shelter, drug counseling, drug treatment, provide safe parking, camping area, create homeless shelters, work with other cities, and analyze the problems. All those are very expensive things. The state of California has spent $15 billion in the last few years on homelessness with virtually nothing to show for it going forward. In Sacramento, the homeless population, right in Sacramento, has grown 71% in the last three years. So it's had no effect there except an anti-effect. And Newsom has got a program now where he wants to spend another billion dollars on homeless, and he looks at that as just a start. Okay, so the question is, the city council, the question is, who are you going to serve with how much of the city's precious resources? I hope it's us in North Beach. We're crying for help.
Thank you.
See, we don't have any money for Gatekeepers, but we have plenty of money for social workers and shelters and all those good things. So let's stop the gaslighting here, gaslighting here. We are not talking about families who are down and out, we're not talking about people who lost their job or their apartment. We're talking about able, hardened criminals, drugs, alcohol, theft, assaults, oh, sorry, sexual assaults, assaults, and worse. Again, they say we don't have the money, but how much does SC spend on cleaning up after the homeless? How much do homeowners and businesses spend cleaning up? And how much do homeowners and businesses lose from homeless crime? Let's see where I'm at. So, I would like, since I'm right here, to ask you, since we have the pastor here from Christ Lutheran, let's ask her to put her money where her mouth is. How about opening up her church in her parking lot to do the feedings in her parking lot? How about opening up and letting them come into your church when it is cold out? And how about letting them put tents and RVs in your parking lot instead of our backyard?
Thank you.
Jill Watson, followed by final speaker is AQ.
Hi, everyone, again. My name is Jill Watson, 40-year resident, homeowner. I don't know where to start. I mean, here are my notes from all these speakers that have come up. And I, I mean, my kids grew up in North Beach, and it was beautiful. And like everyone has said tonight, it's a pit right now. And I was there the other day just watching some of the things that were going on, I thought I'd just take a little walk. These guys came out of the bathroom like zombies. I'm not kidding. I mean, if I was a tourist here and I had my children there, I'd be long gone. I ask that you support this resolution tonight. The people that don't agree with me that are here tonight, that keep shaking their heads, I just, I really would like to sit down with them and ask them the questions because when they say they don't, they don't see it. I mean, do you go to North Beach? Do you hang out there? Okay, have you ever been accosted? No, well, I don't know why.
Please keep the comments in the audience.
Yes, okay. I just think there's more people here tonight talking about the negative side of what's happening in San Clemente than the positive side. I don't know where those people are getting their data, and they think it's fine to give a homeless person, whether you're mentally ill or not. You need help. I agree with that. I don't want to give somebody a $700,000 apartment to let them go in and live there without any rules or regulations and just, "Here, you're homeless, here's the place. Put everybody in a nice, big facility, let them work there, and, you know, work the fields and work the kitchen and the laundry." Why should everybody go to their own, I wish somebody would give me, my kids, I wish somebody would hand my children, who can't afford to live here, $700,000 apartment. I mean, why do they get to have that? We have one of our homeless, which many people here tonight know, he had housing given to him in Lake Forest. He went out and sublet his apartment so he could make money, and he moved back to North Beach. I mean, come on. I'm all for helping the next person, but not people who don't want it, people that come on and take this as a lifestyle. There are people who need help, and they usually take it because it's out there. The ones that are here in San Clemente, the ones that are ruining North Beach for all of these hard-paying citizens who, again, have, they have to feed their family. I'd be afraid to go to work if I lived in North Beach because when I got back, who knows what could happen? They've talked about theft, they've talked about, you know, what are they going to do?
Sorry, your time is up.
Where'd my blingy go? Anyway.
I hope you listen.
Final speaker is AQ.
We had wonderful speakers tonight, and I'm just going to wrap up to say, I'm a San Clemente resident of over 50 years, and half that time I've spent growing up North Beach. I attended the North Beach Association meeting, and where residents and business owners spoke. And the North Beach Association also had pictures, and with those pictures, they also included their testimonials, and many people spoke. I also attended the Maxburg Park neighborhood meeting, and many people voiced their concerns regarding safety. And they received immediate action, so why can't North Beach residents have the same? And that's a big, huge question, why it should be given to both. So what it comes down to is, what is the cost of public safety? And I think this is something that we all need to do. I think that the message to all of the city council members is that we want our town back. I think the people have spoken about that. And as far as, someone mentioned something about ADA rights, but I hope that she or he support Councilmember Gene James's First Amendment rights as well in commenting and making comments as he fits. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it. Just back, oh, one other thing. At the Maxburg Park meeting afterwards, I spoke to Deputy McCormick, and he's the, he's in charge of the South, or he's part of the South Gang Enforcement Team Special Investigations Bureau, and we had a little chat. And we were talking about the RVs parked at Maxburg Park. And he had mentioned the time where he was almost assaulted by someone from the RV, in the RV. So I'm really concerned about this because it involves everybody, it involves safety, and that's what the bottom line is. We need our town back. Thank you.
Okay, is that the final speaker?
That was it.
Okay. Okay, now it's time for, oh, yeah, time for discussion. Would you like to go first, Mr. Cabral?
Well, actually, I'd just like to make the motion to approve and adopt Resolution 2310 as written.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Well, before we vote on that motion, is there any discussion on the motion?
You know, I'll say, thank you for everyone who came out tonight. Some of you work long hours, and you're here late at night because you love this community. And I think we need to thank you. And it's unfortunate that your concerns are just dismissed, is out of hand, by certain elements in this community. But, you know, this is about the safety and security of our families. This, public safety is the cornerstone of our accountability to you as a community, as a city. We don't, we don't want San Clemente to become the hellhole Los Angeles, San Francisco, Oakland, Sacramento, San Diego, and the list goes on. You know, some of you are angry at us for even considering it. Be angry at a president that doesn't support, that doesn't secure our borders, that lets drugs come into this community. Be angry at a governor who's been permissive and a state legislature who has just about all but legalized every drug there is. And how's that working out for us? Save your anger for those people. Not that, we're just, we just want to protect our community. And, Mr. City Manager, real quick question. I assume Gatekeepers is providing us a hold-harmless agreement and additional insured, is that correct?
We'll make sure to include that in the contract as we finalize that. Excuse me.
That's all I have.
Okay. Councilwoman Mayor.
So I want to say, first of all, thank you for all the speakers coming tonight. I want to make this perfectly clear. It doesn't matter if you're a resident, a visitor, a transient, sheltered or unsheltered, young or old, if you break our laws in our city, then you will be held accountable. I think, I think that is apparent that laws are being broken, that the perception from the community is that there's a lack of accountability, that more needs to be done to address the security of North Beach. I believe that enforcement is one way to address what is happening there. My concern is that a request for proposal was never initiated. We had less than a week until this meeting to make a decision. I'm not, this doesn't sit right that we have only interviewed this one organization, one company, and haven't considered any other proposals. Spending $262,800 over the next two months and potentially more deserves our due diligence. I'm going to, if this motion does not pass, I have another motion that I would like to make. Should I make that counter motion now, or?
Well, you would want to do the substitute motion before we vote on the other motion normally, and then we would vote on the substitute motion first.
All right, so here's my substitute motion, then, that we direct city staff to come back with multiple security options to find the best fit for San Clemente.
Do we have a second on that? Okay, I will second that motion. Continuing with discussion on both motions, did you have any comments? Mayor Protimnobok?
I want to just also thank everyone that came out to speak tonight. North Beach and Del Mar and other parts of our town is a problem. It's a serious problem, and I think we've heard it very well expressed tonight. And it's something that is intolerable, and it's something we shouldn't tolerate and needs to be remedied, and it needs to be remedied quickly. I commend Victor and Gene for trying to expedite this by bringing this motion to first tonight and hearing about Gatekeepers, an organization that I was not familiar with and was not familiar with their operation in Oceanside. One thing that concerns me is the fact that comments were made One thing that concerns me is the fact that comments were made tonight about how we asked too much of our Orange County sheriffs, our code enforcement people and our park rangers. I disagree. The problems that we've addressed tonight should have been addressed and can be addressed by every one of those organizations. We've had a city manager that's been on the job now for a couple of weeks, just a few weeks, and hasn't had an opportunity to really wrap his hands around this. And my bias is for action, not for analysis, prolonged and unending analysis. But I think that the current staff we have is capable of doing the job and the gap that we talked about, the gap between enforcement and the code is something I think we can address internally. I think we can address it with our existing staff, but it needs to be addressed. And if it's not being addressed, we need to remove the people that aren't doing their job, the park rangers and the code enforcement, and get people who will do the job or, or hire more of those people to make sure the job is actually done. So I think that we definitely need to move forward. I think the, the fact that we are potentially allocating as much as a million and a half dollars to address this problem over the next year can be addressed by people that have actual authority, not just physical presence to give a visual deterrence, but actual, actual hands-on enforcement which needs to occur. And I'm not sure that a guard agency that has a physical presence, as good as that is, doesn't completely get the job done. Because when problems are addressed like we've heard tonight with public urination, physical violence, intimidation, trespass, those, those aren't going to be handled by a guard company. They're going to pick up the phone and call Captain Christian and say, we need, we need some attention here. So I sympathize with the problem. It needs to be addressed quickly. What I would recommend, and I'm going to make a substitute to the substitute motion, and ask that the city manager analyze the resources that are needed to address the problems that we're trying to address here tonight, the public safety issues, and then report back at his earliest convenience, I won't put a timeframe on it, but at his earliest convenience. And with that analysis, include an, if, if additional outside resources in the nature of a guard agency are necessary, that, that analysis comes back with an RFP for, for competing companies to bid for that, for that contract, should one be necessary in his analysis and should he be directed so by this council. And those are my comments. So that's my, that's my substitute motion.
Okay. Do we have a second on that substitute?
I can second that.
Okay.
I don't know how that goes along.
We'll have to ask our city attorney what order we go in, but let, before we get to that, is there any other comments on, on any of the motions before I comment?
Yeah, you know, my, my comment is, you know, we haven't seen any action from, from our code enforcement, our park rangers. More than a year ago, I asked our code, our code compliance people to start a drone program because we have a serious fire, fire issue here in San Clemente. And I'm not sure if they, you know, I'm not sure if they ever did it. And now this year, with all the rain and all the vegetation we see, they probably still won't do it. I, I have no confidence in our code enforcement people to handle this. I have no confidence actually in, in Sheriff Barnes and, and OCSD. They have a lot of things going, no confidence for them to be able to handle this. The, my, my concern is these people in North Beach have suffered long enough, long enough. The city has suffered long enough. Let's try something, something conceptually. If we only try it for 60 days, let's see how, how it works. And then during that time, the city manager during that 60 days can do that RFP. I think we can have all of that all at one, one time.
Yeah. Okay. Any, any other discussion?
Yes. I haven't said anything yet, but I'll speak now. When I ran for city council, one of the issues that came up before me, almost on a daily basis with what was happening in terms of security in San Clemente, and it had to do with North Beach, it had to do with Del Mar. And I committed that I would do something. That's why I originally made this motion to hire private security to do something about it. I'm fully committed to that. This issue is not about homelessness, I don't want to mix the two issues. But I do want to say that Mark and I are making great progress on the other issue and at another meeting, another time, we will tell you about what, what we're doing there. Because it's not just sitting there by itself. It's part of this problem. It's not appropriate for today because it's, this issue isn't about the homeless. This is about public security and safety. Now, I go to North Beach probably every week just to see what's happening. We had a stabbing there. I mean, I don't, most of these people don't know that people were stabbed there a few weeks ago because it doesn't hit our local newspapers. But it's a dangerous place. I don't feel safe going down to North Beach. My mom, who used to visit there and travel around, doesn't go there anymore. And as most of the people stated, it's not a safe place to be by yourself, even during the day, much less nighttime. We do need to address this issue. We need to do it immediately. I mean, we've, this city council has for years, four years now, five years maybe, has delayed this issue, has always found a reason to do another study, another report, another evaluation. It's time for action now. It's time to take a vote, to make a stand, to say you're in support of the people and the residents of San Clemente. And that's where we're at tonight. I, I also want to say, you know, because it's important that our sheriff department, I think our sheriff department does a fabulous job. They are not, they are not though, they cannot be on the ground all the time. I'll give you one, one, one good example. We had a person talk about her business that was, she couldn't get the sheriff to respond and you would think, okay, the sheriff's not responsive. That's not the case. The sheriff was actually at that time, as I understand it, out on a real call arresting people, being an investigation of a major crime operation in San Clemente. That's what they should be doing. They shouldn't be trying to move people from a private business owner. And this is what this organization will be able to do, walk the streets, manage the streets, get people moving along. It's time now to make that decision and I am fully supportive of doing that. Being there, observing these people, obviously we're not going to arrest them. But if they're doing drugs and they know they're being filmed, they're not going to do the drugs. They'll move on. And our presence here with, with, with this, this company will, will be an absolute deterrent, deterrent for the criminal behavior because people do not want to be seen doing their illegal activities. They don't want to see, be seen with their, their bicycles, chopping up bicycles, bringing stolen property there. They are very concerned about all that. And it's that extra pair of eyes that is going to make a difference in my view. So that pair of eyes, unlike our sheriff that can't be there and these, the people that are involved in criminal activity, they know when the sheriff's coming, they watch him, they have a big, an opportunity to see them and they scatter throughout. And then as soon as the sheriff leaves, they come right back to doing their illegal activity. These people will be there and they won't leave. They'll keep watching them. And they, I've talked to them, I've seen them. They say, we're going to be here and we're going to watch you and if you're involved in this illegal, legal activity, we're going to document it. And I'm, I'm done with my shift in eight hours and somebody else will be here right after to watch you. So if you want to do something illegal, don't do it here. And they've found in their experiences that the people will move on to someplace where illegal activity is not watched. So that's what we need. I didn't, I didn't, we had two members attend that forum on North Beach and I wish I could have been there, but you can't have three members at a, at a forum. But I did read all the recommendations and I, I, I think all of them are very, very good and we plan to follow up on, on all those recommendations too. It is a comprehensive problem and we are trying to deal comprehensively. But today, the issue that we're faced with is the safety and security of our residents throughout town. And that's what we have to address and you're either for public safety or you're against it. So if you vote for this, you're for public safety. If you vote against it, I say you're against public safety.
That's right. I say, I say you're, I say you're dead wrong on that, that analogy. But you can be, you can be for public safety and do it right. I agree with Gene's comments about the frustration of the last year. But you know, in the last year, we've replaced our city manager, we've got a new police chief, we've got a new city attorney, and I think they need to be able to do their job and they need to be, do it properly. I agree, we need eyes on the problem. But we need eyes with authority. We don't need people that are just there. We need people with authority. This government has the authority. A guard agency does not have the authority. We need to empower our, our management to do their job. And just like in the last year with the frustration, we had to replace a number of our key people here. And if the people who are currently doing the job don't do the job, we can replace them as well. So I would call for the question.
Okay. I have another comment.
All right.
I don't believe for one moment if Rascal Gauv tomorrow morning has a, someone who's disorderly, someone who's mentally unstable, someone who's threatening, and if she calls tomorrow morning, I don't believe for a moment that OCSD will have the ability to be there within 10, 15 minutes. And it's not a matter of authority, it's a matter of response. We simply can't afford enough deputies to properly respond in, in this city. This is a low-cost augmentation for public safety. One deputy costs us more than $300,000 a year. And with their union contract coming up, it's going to be another five, six, 10% over that. This is a low-cost solution. And if it doesn't work in 60 days, we back out of it. I, I, I agree with Victor. It's either you're for public safety and the residents in North Beach or you're not.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment?
I don't know. Just looking at the math, and about $300,000 a year multiplied by five, that'd be $1.5 million, which is about the same amount for the contract that we're looking at.
That's one patrol car. That's one, you need to understand scheduling, Mr. Inmira.
All right. Okay. Well, I have a few comments and then I think we can, we'll get to the motions just to round it out. So first thing I want to make clear, the situation in North Beach, situation for our residents and businesses there, the situation for our businesses in the T-zone, absolutely not manufactured. Absolutely a real situation. So let's be 100% clear about that. I think everybody should, should clap to that. And I, I sincerely feel for those residents and businesses, particularly in North Beach. It is not a, not a safe place to, to be in many ways. And, and also for those businesses in the T-zone that have to clean up every day in front of their businesses and, and make sure that they're, that they're safe enough for people to be able to enter so that they can do business and survive. And I think I probably speak for all of us and I say, we all pledge to do everything legally possible to address these violations of our laws and our municipal code. I don't think we'd be here if we didn't all want to do that. And I think that's where I kind of get into a little bit of trouble though on this issue. Because when you talk about legally possible, I have sincere concerns about liability if we do a program like this. I can't get into details, but some of the comments that have been made and some of the rhetoric around this, cleaning people from up here on the dais, has, has put us in the crosshairs of a potential massive, massive lawsuit if we move forward on something like this. You know, so, so I, I feel that what I would like to see is, in some of the veins we've heard, I support our sheriff's deputies. I support our individuals who have actual law enforcement authority to enforce these. So I would actually like, Captain Christian, if you would, wouldn't mind coming up, I have one question for you.
Is that, is that in order? Is that in order? Can I, at point?
Can we ask a question?
No, I think we're, we're already in debate. I don't think it's appropriate.
I think point of order, I agree with Victor. It's, the motions have been made, we're discussing.
Motions have been made, seconded. I don't think it's appropriate. I'd object.
Okay. I'd sure like the city attorney's position. I have no problem with moving on.
If you're going to go back to asking questions, you should have a motion to do that at this point since we have three motions on the floor.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we allow Captain Christian to comment.
Okay.
If that takes all three motions off the floor?
Well, so typically you would only have three motions pending, right? So you have three pending, that would be the fourth.
Oh.
So you're over, right?
Okay.
It wouldn't eliminate the prior motions.
No. So.
It just allows the captain to speak.
Right. So, but you already have three, you already have three pending, so you don't have room for a fourth. So you need to.
Temporarily table a motion? Is that it?
Well, you have to do something with one of your three.
Well, that's all right. That's all right. I can summarize discussions. Thank you, Captain Christian. I think what, from the, from the discussions that we've had, the, our sheriff's deputies would like, would like an opportunity to address this and, and be, be, and have the council's support and the city's support in addressing this from a law enforcement perspective. And I certainly support, hold on, hold on. I'm not done commenting. I didn't interrupt anyone else. And so I, I mean, if, if we're going to spend the very limited money we have on this, I say we spend it in the most effective way possible and that is on our deputies. So that would be my first option is to increase the number of deputies. We've already got a program to increase our code compliance because again, code compliance also has authority that unfortunately Gatekeepers doesn't have. We need more, more code compliance and we need more park rangers. And I'm, I'm happy to support additional funding for those. But let's, let's remember, I mean, we didn't budget this. We don't have this money. This comes right out of our unassigned fund balance. That's not a way to, to run a city. There needs to be some process here as we've, as we've talked about before. Look, to address this, there is no silver bullet. I think one of the things that I'm sort of troubled by here, and I can sense that, look at, nobody wants, nobody wants North Beach to be cleaned up more than me. Believe me. I, we hear about it all the time. We hear about it all the time. But the, what the, the real way to do that is to invest in those communities, to do what we, what we've, we've let that community down. We haven't invested, we haven't invested in development in those areas. We haven't invested in development in those areas. We haven't invested in our downtown area to make sure that that place is clean and secure. We need investment for our businesses downtown and our residents and businesses in North Beach. That will create an environment that is a deterrent naturally for, for this. Coupled with increased enforcement, we can, we can get a handle on this. And, yeah, so, I mean, that's what I'd like to see long-term. I, you know, I don't want to go on because, look, I mean, I pledged when I was mayor and some of you read the article, there was probably two things I wanted to address. Coastal erosion and homelessness. And I'm not going to rest until we take control of our, of our, of our city, we get our codes complied with and we make our residents feel safe. Because quality of life is our absolute, absolute number one priority and responsibility as a council. But I, this, this program is, I have to tell you, I've looked at this, we didn't have a lot of time. I do not believe this would result in the benefit that you all seek. I know what would, more sheriff's deputies and more code compliance. That's what would. So I'm going to have a lot of trouble supporting this for all the reasons that I mentioned. And I know I'm going to disappoint a lot of people, a lot of people that are friends of mine. It's really hard to do that. But we have to do the right thing. We have to do the thing that's best for the city. And putting the city in legal liability, doing, and spending money on something that's not going to accomplish what we want, need to accomplish, that's not a good decision for the council. I have to make. I have to make, I have to make the decision that I think will put the city in the best position financially and otherwise. And so it is a very difficult decision, I can tell you, though. It's certainly not easy. Because I feel for all of you, and I want to thank all of those who spoke very, very, very passionately. And so with that, we can get to our motions unless...
We had a point of order regarding allowing Captain Christian to answer questions from Councilman James.
I think what we decided was it would take a motion to have him come up and answer questions.
I made that motion.
I think we already have three motions on the table, so we'd have to table...
Is three the maximum?
Three's the maximum, so...
I could table my motion.
You withdraw it?
Yes, I can withdraw my motion.
Okay. Then you have a motion to...
To allow questions to be asked of Captain...
Okay, well, I'll second that motion. Any, okay, Councilmember Enmire?
Aye.
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 Okay, and I'm an aye, so it's unanimous. Thank you, thank you, Jay. You're back.
I haven't done anything yet.
Mayor, councilmembers?
Yes, thank you, and sorry to bring you up at this late hour. I guess my question, I had originally wanted to ask you, you're in a difficult position, but you are a resident of San Clemente, so I know, Captain Christian, that you understand this probably more than any chief of police services we've had. And I'd hate to put you in this position, but would you, would you like the opportunity to address this issue of violation of criminal laws and our codes? Would you like us to give you that opportunity before we look at potentially other options?
Well, absolutely, that's what we're here for, as the Orange County Sheriff's Department, as your contract law enforcement. I'd just like to say that we're already doing those things, excuse me. I'd also like to say that obviously is a very heated topic here in the city, and I give everybody credit for coming in here with their emotions and speaking about something that's so dearly important to the city. And I also commend the council for trying to figure out solutions to this problem. I'd just like to say that, and you guys know, this is not a law enforcement problem. If we're talking about homelessness, it is not a law enforcement topic. It's much deeper than that.
We're talking about...
He is not addressing this agenda.
Okay, yeah, sorry, we're talking about...
We're talking about gatekeepers.
Publics, public safety and...
Of course.
And then enforcing of our codes.
And that's what I'm here for. We're talking about gatekeepers being in place to bridge a gap, and it sounds like a great product. I don't know if it's a solution to what we are looking for. I would love the opportunity to keep providing you the services that we already provide. And I'd just like to say, we have been doing that. And I stand wholeheartedly with Sheriff Barnes and what he addresses the department to handle. That being, we are absolutely committed in enforcing the laws that are there, the various laws between the state, municipal codes, and enforcing the laws when people violate those laws, regardless of what section of the population they come from, equally across the board, whether it is homeless, whether it's non-homeless. We are there to enforce those laws, and I urge the community to call us when they see these things occurring. A lot of times, we're not getting called. I'm getting emails on Sunday morning about incidents that occur on Friday night. It's great for awareness, it's not great for dealing with the problems at the hand.
Mr. Mayor?
One last question before I turn it over.
Yes, sir.
It was just related. Will you commit to addressing these specific areas we've heard of today, North Beach and downtown, in terms of doing, doing as much as you possibly can and devoting the resources to securing public safety in those areas?
I've already committed to doing that. I've been in communication with the city manager regarding the reallocation of resources, regarding overnight patrols of the beach at consistent hours to actually get a good handle on whether or not they're narrative true, that the beachers are being overrun at nighttime. We started this a couple of weeks ago, I've informed the city manager, it has been very limited contact on the beach at night. We're out there multiple times a night when the beach closes, halfway through the period that the beach is closed, and then at 4:00 AM as well. We've had 11 contacts in two weeks that we've been doing this. 11. Not to say that I, I understand the concerns, people are concerned, North Beach residents are concerned. I'm doing everything I can to get more resources to that area to address that concern that's so hotly debated tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I have several questions. Thank you for agreeing to testify, I have several questions. You know, one of the, one of the issues is that our sidewalks are blocked, and that they're blocked every day. And I understand that you don't, in my view, you don't have the resources, you need to take care of that, but how many, how many times in the, over the past four weeks have you sided, or moved, or done anything to address that issue?
Personally, myself?
No, no.
Or my people?
The people, yeah.
I don't have numbers for you, Councilman, I don't know the numbers when it comes to people being on the sidewalk, obstructing traffic on the sidewalk, I couldn't tell you that.
Let me ask you, over the six past, the past six months, how many drug arrests have you made in the North Beach area?
I don't have those numbers with me, I'd have to research that and give that to you.
But offhand, I mean, are you familiar with some number of...
I know we had four arrests today in North Beach.
For drug?
For drugs, warrants, smoking. Correct.
Very good. The stabbing incident, how many stabbing assault incidents have we had in North Beach over the past six months or a year?
Again, I don't have those numbers for you tonight, sir.
As it stands now, you think you could put together the resources that it will take to make that, that area and the downtown area a safe community the way it was five years ago?
I'm here to tell you that obviously more deputies would be helpful, but I'm willing to try to reallocate resources to address these concerns. It will obviously pull resources from the rest of the city, but I can, I'm working with some of our shift cover cars to absolutely address this issue.
And what, what would it be shifted from? What, what kind of...
I'm trying to get around-the-week coverage.
Councilmember James?
So, so you say, let me back up. It was set up here, we need to add a deputy. I think what it was meant was we probably need to add another patrol area. How many deputies would you have to hire in order to add just one car per shift?
I'm sorry, one car per shift?
How many deputies would we need to pay for to add just one car per shift?
We currently run four different shifts. We have an A-side and a B-side, three days a week for each shift, so that'd be four.
You'd have to hire four?
Four deputies.
So four deputies times 300 and whatever, so that would be 1.2 million dollars it would cost the city, about.
A year.
And would you agree right now that your response time leaves a lot to be desired on non-emerg, I'm not talking emergencies, but non, what you would categorize as non-emergencies?
I don't know that I could, could say that is correct. I think our response times are across the board, typical of what we're looking for, of what, what the base model would be. Emergency, it's, it's around five minutes, we're hitting that mark, around that mark. Sometimes, some months it's a little higher, some months it's a little lower. That's where our general focus is on priority-one crimes.
And I think we're not talking priority, we haven't been talking priority-one crimes this evening. What we've been talking about is nuisance crimes. And the, it appears to me that you're busy doing other things, and that really creates a lag on your non-emergency calls. And the, I mean, I, I hear, I hear it all the time. That's a statement, that's not a question. But you heard, you heard the people that came here tonight from North Beach, who, they're concerned about the safety and security of their families, of themselves, and what do you have to say, what can we, what can we tell them? How can we, how can we create an omnipresence, if you will, and, and make them feel more comfortable in that community?
Simply by doing the job that we can do, and that is enforce the various codes that we can enforce. Penal Code, Health and Safety Code, and some of the municipal codes.
But, point of order, I don't mean to interrupt, but it's 11 o'clock, do we need a motion to extend the meetings?
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Thank you.
But it doesn't, you know, if you ask these, if you ask these people, they don't feel as though that has occurred up to this point. So what has changed that we can change it going forward?
Again, like I said, I'm trying to reallocate resources down to North Beach.
That's all I have.
Of course, it's a pull from the other areas of the city by doing that.
I have one other.
Can, can Councilmember Enmire?
There's been concern recently about like a bike stealing ring going on down there. Is anything being done to address that issue at, at North Beach?
Not specifically at North Beach, I know bikes are stolen all over the city. We do have programs to, to try to capture bike thieves. We currently do that on a weekly basis. Don't want to get into tactics here, but... Yes, we're addressing bike thefts around the city, not specifically to North Beach.
We have the new ordinance on bike repair, too, that's in place. Right, so for folks that have a lot of bikes, we've got the bike repair ordinance, but anyway.
And then, sorry, follow-up question. What, what would you need from the city to help with this enforcement in, in that area? In the North Beach downtown area? What, what more resources from the city would you need to do this better?
Are we talking as far as bike?
Sorry, no, in terms of making sure the enforcement of our municipal codes are adhered to.
Well, I think we're, we're in a position where we have code enforcement, we have park rangers to help assist the sheriff's department in municipal code enforcement. Maybe it's more, more staffing in those locations, maybe it's more staffing with the sheriff's department. I think that we have the resources to deal with the issue that we're, that we're confronted with, having, having given an opportunity to do a little bit more, things I talked about, like readdressing resources to the, the specific areas, again, at the detriment of pulling resources away from other areas of the city, but it's a hotspot, I'm willing to take a look at that and try to, to address a problem by doing that.
Yeah, question. Captain, there's been a lot of discussion this evening about allocating resources properly to address the serious crime issues in, in North Beach and Del Mar. I like your thoughts on, on reallocation. It's kind of like a, like a body that's sick. If you have a wound, the white blood cells rush to the wound to solve the problem, and they're not as, as prevalent in other parts of the body. We have a significant police presence, you do, in, in San Clemente, and I'd like to hear your thoughts on how you want to resource, how you can resource, reallocate those resources, to marshal those resources, to make sure that in combination with code enforcement and the park rangers, you have eyes on the ground, and you have people that are actually addressing some of these very disgusting and disturbing issues we've had. So what are your thoughts on, you've mentioned you can reallocate, tell us how you're gonna do that, and how you're gonna focus on the trouble spots?
Specifically, we have, we have, most of our patrols on a 12-hour shift, and those are shift, AM shifts and PM shifts, and then we have a few cover cars. At the risk of not using our cover cars to kind of backfill some of the days and night cars, I could, what I'm looking at now specifically is to readdress the cover cars, to kind of team up and work throughout the week, specifically assigned down at the beach, North Beach and Del Mar area, to specifically be there to handle a lot of these homeless, not just homeless, but it, safety issues that are coming up in these North Beach and T-zone areas.
Has your department ever had any, any concerns or problems interacting effectively with our code enforcement or park rangers people?
Have we had problems with?
Have any concerns at all about your interaction and working with them?
No, nothing like that. I think more communication is better. We've addressed that by having more frequent meetings with the, the other faculties here, like code enforcement and the park rangers as well. I think that is a good start. I know we started that after I got here. It seems to be going on more regularly than it has in the past, and it seems to be working.
Thank you. No more questions.
Councilmember Cabral?
I have a question, yeah. You have some children, right? How long is it going to take before you will feel safe dropping your children off at North Beach and letting them walk alone in that area? Is it gonna be a month? It'll be six months? What do you, what's your time estimate to, to make North Beach a community where you can drop your children, or your wife, or the general population off, and they will feel safe?
I go down to the beach on the weekly, my kids are down on the beach weekly, I've been down there with my wife. I don't know if that was a rhetorical question to me, sir, quite honestly. My children, they're, they're down at the beach.
At North, North Beach?
Yes.
And you drop them off there?
No, I don't drop them off, they're on their own now.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you, Captain Christian, appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we, city attorney, we, we now have two motions on the table, and one tabled motion. Do we...
Withdrawn, I think.
Oh, withdrawn?
Yes.
Withdrawn, okay. So, so we have two motions on the table, I believe we have the substitute motion by Council, or by Mayor Protem Noblock, and then we would get to the initial motion.
That's correct, it goes in reverse order.
And can we get a restatement of that motion, since it's been quite a while? Do we, do we have that, city clerk, or do you want to have Mayor Protem Noblock restate it?
Can you, can you read that, or you want me to restate it, or can you find it quick enough?
I've got it. A motion by Mayor Protem Noblock, second by Councilmember Enmire, to report back at, for staff to report back at its earliest convenience, and included an RFP for competing companies to bid for security services. Did I capture that?
I think that was mine.
Yeah, the, the motion is that the city manager is to report back at his earliest, and I want to change it from earliest possible convenience to a time certain. How much time do you think would be necessary to, to respond to a question like that?
I think we can have a meeting with...
Six days?
Yeah, next Monday.
A month, or next meeting?
I think we could do that probably by the meeting on the 18th.
By?
Meeting on the 18th of...
Second meeting in April.
My motion would be for the city manager to report back on the, our meeting on the 18th concerning the resources necessary to address the public safety issues in North Beach and, and Del Mar, and to, and if in that analysis, a public guard, a guard service is necessary, that an RFP be prepared to bid that contract if one is recommended and is deemed necessary by the city manager.
Does that, that sound right, Councilmember Enmire? Okay. All right, we'll, we'll start the vote, I'll start down here. Councilmember Cabral?
On that...
On that substitute motion, yes.
Now, I really have a question. If that substitute motion passes, then the original motion fails. Is that right?
Yes.
That was the intent of the motion, correct?
Pardon me?
Can you just confirm, Council, Mayor Protem, that that was the intent of the...
That was the intent of my motion, correct.
And second by Councilmember Enmire?
Yes.
It's a no, then, for me.
No.
Yes, aye.
And I'm an aye. So that motion passes, it's, it's Noblock, Enmire, and Duncan on the ayes, no is James and Cabral, and then I guess that does move out the other motion.
So I'm moved to adjourn this meeting, that the next regular council meeting is scheduled to take place on April 4th, 2023. Closed session will begin at 5:00 PM, and the regular business meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. The meeting will take place in the council chambers located at 910 Caya Negocio, second floor, San Clemente.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Motion was Enmire, second was Noblock.